We're ready. Ready. Good morning, welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for October 9, 2007. Roberta, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Foy.
Here.
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Flynn.
Supervisor Parks.
Here, thank you. This morning, we're fortunate to have Pastor Tom Stephen from Monte Vista Presbyterian Church in Newbury Park. Thank you for coming all the way out to Ventura this morning for our moment.
Thank you for allowing me to be here. About this morning, for your moment of affirmation, I would simply tell you a story. The story comes from Carnegie Hall. There was a time where a little girl was learning to play piano and her mother wanted to inspire her. So she took her to Carnegie Hall to see the great master, Pateroski. As she came into the auditorium, the great grand piano was sitting on the stage. It was polished and beautiful. And the mom sat with her and met some friends and she was talking to some friends. Suddenly, the whole crowd became quiet. And she looked up and walking across the stage was her little girl. And the mom was freaking out. She's like, "No, what are you doing?" But the little girl, oblivious to what was happening in the crowd, walked up and sat on this beautiful grand piano in the middle of the stage. And all the mom could do is say, "Please don't play. Please don't play." And this little girl took her little finger and she went, "Bum, bum, 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 bum." She started playing "Twinkle, twinkle, little star." Now, the Carnegie Hall crowd is freaking out because they don't want to see this happen. They were there to see the master play. And then suddenly, from behind the curtain, steps out the master, Pateroski. And he motions to the crowd, "Keep quiet." And he comes up to the little girl and whispers in her ear, "Keep playing." And so she's, "Bum, bum, 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 bum." And suddenly, with his big arms around this young little girl, he starts playing these beautiful arpeggios and these chords to fill out "Twinkle, twinkle, little star," over and over and over again. And suddenly, this little girl, who only offered "twinkle, twinkle," was suddenly making beautiful music in a duet with the master. She finished, the crowd gave them a standing ovation, Pateroski took a bow, and the little girl gave her curtsy and ran off the stage to her mother. To me, this story demonstrates humble leadership. This story affirms the fact that as we honor those who are small among us, as we give our best as leaders, they will feel affirmed and we will be applauded by our own humility. And the words from the ancient book say this. "Each of you should not only look to your own interests, but also to the interests of others. Do nothing out of selfish ambition or vain conceit, but in humility, consider others better than yourselves." This is our affirmation for today. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
I just want to say that we've been here six years. That's as good of affirmation we've had to start off as we've had in the six years I've been here. Thank you very much. That's great.
Thank you. With that, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
We begin our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion and a second on the minute, seeing no objections, the minutes pass. We'll now move on to agenda review. I think this is a historic occasion. Mr. Johnston?
Going along with that affirmation, Roberta reports there are no modifications to the agenda.
Okay. Does the board wish to make any changes to the agenda? Do we have a motion to accept the agenda as presented to us? Motion and a second, thank you. And seeing no objections, the agenda stands. We now move on to item seven, which is our consent agenda items 10 through 15. Is there a motion?
What is the consent?
Motion and a second on the consent agenda items 10 through 15 and seeing no objections, that also passes. And we can now move on to our public comments. Do we have any public comment cards? No public comment cards? Then we can move on to our board comments. And we can do these and probably still get to our 9:00 AM time certain.
We're breaking the speed barrier.
Supervisor Bennett, would you like to go first?
Yes, I'd be happy to. One, just for people listening out there, and I hope that we can continue to get...
We're ready. Ready. Good morning, welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for October ninth, two thousand and seven. Roberta, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Foy.
Here.
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Flynn. Supervisor Parks.
Here, thank you. This morning, we're fortunate to have Pastor Tom Stevens from Monte Vista Presbyterian Church in Newbury Park. Thank you for coming all the way out to Ventura this morning for our moment.
Thank you for allowing me to be here. About this morning, for your moment of affirmation, I would simply tell you a story. The story comes from Carnegie Hall. There was a time where a little girl was learning to play piano and her mother wanted to inspire her. So she took her to Carnegie Hall to see the great master, Pateroski. As she came into the auditorium, the great grand piano was sitting on the stage, it was polished and beautiful. And the mom sat with her and met some friends and she was talking to some friends, suddenly the whole crowd became quiet. And she looked up and walking across the stage was her little girl. And the mom was freaking out. She's like, "No, what are you doing?" But the little girl, oblivious to what was happening in the crowd, walked up and sat on this beautiful grand piano in the middle of the stage. And all the mom could do is say, "Please don't play. Please don't play." And this little girl took her little finger and she went, "Bum bum 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 bum." She started playing Twinkle Twinkle Little Star. Now, the Carnegie Hall crowd is freaking out because they don't want to see this happen, they're there to see the master play. And then suddenly from behind the curtain steps out the master, Pateroski. And he motions to the crowd, "Keep quiet." And he comes up to the little girl and whispers in her ear, "Keep playing." And so she's, "Bum bum 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 bum." And suddenly with his big arms around this young little girl, he starts playing these beautiful arpeggios and these chords to fill out Twinkle Twinkle Little Star over and over and over again. And suddenly, this little girl who only offered Twinkle Twinkle was suddenly making beautiful music in a duet with the master. She finished, the crowd gave them a standing ovation, Pateroski took a bow, and the little girl gave her curtsy and ran off the stage to her mother. To me, this story demonstrates humble leadership. This story affirms the fact that as we honor those who are small among us, as we give our best as leaders, they will feel affirmed and we will be applauded by our own humility. And the words from the ancient book say this. "Each of you should not only look to your own interests, but also to the interests of others. Do nothing out of selfish ambition or vain conceit, but in humility, consider others better than yourselves." This is our affirmation for today. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
I just want to say that we've been here six years, that's as good of affirmation we've had to start off as we've had in the six years I've been here. Thank you very much. That's great.
Thank you. With that, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
We begin our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion and a second on the minute, seeing no objections, the minutes pass. We'll now move on to agenda review, I think this is a historic occasion. Mr. Johnston?
Going along with that affirmation, Roberta reports, there are no modifications to the agenda.
Okay. Does the board wish to make any changes to the agenda? Then, do we have a motion to accept the agenda as presented to us? Motion and a second, thank you, and seeing no objections, the agenda stands. We now move on to item seven, which is our consent agenda items ten through fifteen. Is there a motion?
What is the consent?
Motion and a second on the consent agenda items ten through fifteen, and seeing no objections, that also passes. And we can now move on to our public comments. Do we have any public comment cards? No public comment cards, then we can move on to our board comments. And we can do these and probably still get to our nine AM time certain.
We're breaking the speed barrier.
Supervisor Bennett, would you like to go first?
Yes, I'd be happy to. One, just for people listening out there, and I hope that we can continue to get some more publicity for it, I rode the express bus from Ojai to the county government center yesterday morning, was the inaugural day for that express bus. And it's a great resource for people in the Ojai Valley to have an express bus like that, but they'll only have it if they use it. It's the classic use it or lose it, certainly with a service like that. So I encourage people to not only use it themselves, but get the word out to other people that are in the Ojai Valley that could use the express bus. It got us here in fifty minutes, and more importantly, for the fifty minutes that we were on the bus, I was able to use that time productively. If you were driving, even if you could have gotten here in thirty minutes or thirty-five minutes driving, you would have not had that time available. So that's one. Two, I'd like to point out that Los Angeles Times talks about the federal lawsuit that's being filed against California for the amount of money that we pay for foster families. And we're woefully low relative to most of the other states. We're thirty-sixth in providing funding in terms of foster care, and yet we're easily one of the most expensive states out there. But I think the thing that was probably most shocking that they were able to find out is that the reimbursement rate for a two-year-old foster care child in the United States is less than the reimbursement rate that you'd have to pay if you wanted to have the dog in the kennel for the month. And so this federal lawsuit, I just hope it is successful because we have known foster care reimbursement by the state of California has been too low, and it's been one of the problems that we have in terms of recruiting foster families. So we'll see how that lawsuit goes, and I certainly hope that it's one more reason why the state of California will try to increase that. And then the final thing, you know, we have conversations about our campaign finance ordinance here and whether we need it, et cetera, and I would just offer what you saw in the Los Angeles Times about how some people, some politicians are spending their campaign finance money. I would offer to you that what we do here to try to keep people's confidence in the process is really healthy. We don't allow supervisors to raise money except in the year before their election. And that's one of the ways that you keep down the abuse, people paying, making contributions throughout the whole term of somebody's office. Oftentimes, those contributions are not too far away from when a particular vote on a particular project is coming in. And then those things are what are used for the travel expenses listed in the newspaper. You know, lots of European wine cellar in Bordeaux and those kind of expenses. I just think the average citizen can't figure out how it makes common sense that that's either healthy or what's the difference between that and just buying somebody the gift or the European travel and all of those kinds of things. So I know that there's sometimes some frustration with trying to come up with campaign finance ordinances in this legal environment where you have to write them, so complicated. But there is a benefit to having people's confidence that the money is being used appropriately and is not being given inappropriately. There's some benefit in that. So those are three points I'd like to make, thank you very much. I'd like to board the adjournment memory of the people on the list.
Thank you, Supervisor Bennett. Supervisor Foy, would you like to go next?
Thank you very much. Couple things going on. Simi Valley has some characters from the past coming to life in our ghost tour at the Stratton Historical Park Museum. That goes on from October twelfth to twenty-eighth. You're gonna see people from the past to come together in thirteen different stops throughout this place. It's kind of neat. Historical Society, Ventura County Cultural Association, Simi Valley Historical Society are putting this on. So that's kind of a neat thing going on in Simi. Also, the Ronald Reagan Library just received ten million dollars from the Edinburgh Foundation to help launch a nationwide educational program. You know, political responsibility, and that's what's gonna be taught there, it's gonna be, teachers are gonna be taught, it's gonna be great, about our U.S. Constitution and the American presidency and our democratic process. So that's kind of some neat things going on there. Also, you know, today also, I was just telling some of the members up here that we just had a shooting in Simi Valley that was tragic, that two people were killed and a couple wounded, and we pray for those people. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Foy. Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you, and good morning. And I'd ask the board to adjourn in memory, two folks from the third district. One, I'd like to call out Christopher Dwayne Coen, he was known as Coach, very active in the community for years, basketball coach, and will truly be missed by many, known as a good man. And I too would like to mention a couple of things going out of my district and actually countywide opportunities to go and pick a pumpkin at the pumpkin patch at the Faulkner Farms. This particular pumpkin patch is being run this year by the Santa Paula Rotary. And all the money's raised will go back into the community to benefit other nonprofit and scholarships and groups in the Santa Paula community. There's also a ghost tour going on in Santa Paula, and it's put on by community organizations and they walk through the streets of Santa Paula, and also Limoneira is involved with the ghost tour this year. And then on Saturday, there will be the American Cancer Society Relay for Life, which I will be participating in, both in Fillmore and in Camarillo, starting out the morning in Camarillo and ending in Fillmore. It is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, as I mentioned last week, and certainly ask those of you who have been touched by the threatening disease of breast cancer that you support folks and support your family and support the American Cancer Society and participate wherever you can. And I'd also, I see that, and I meant to mention it, didn't, I didn't intend to pull it off, but I would like to, as one board member, suggest that the Workforce Investment Board Annual Report actually come to the board for their presentation and any questions and discussion. As you know, they're a very important board in our county. They delegate a lot of federal funds that go into helping our workforce and developing the future workforce. And they partner with a lot of organizations in our community. And the report is very good, and it is required to be presented to the board. And I, probably you've had individual, as I have, presentations on it in my office and discussions. But I think for the public to know who is the Workforce Investment Board, what funds they do delegate out into the community to really build our workforce would be valuable to have them come under the board's agenda for open public presentation and discussion. That would just be my comment on that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have one more thing you wanted to add Supervisor Bennett?
I did, thank you, I did. It's forged on record in support of AB 1542, the mobile home law, and this is the week. The governor's gonna sign it, or he's not gonna sign it, or he's gonna veto it, one of those three things. We'll take either of the first two, right, in terms of being successful. And I did want to point out that we were successful in getting the AARP to send a letter to the governor, which is very helpful at this point in time, given that AARP has been helping the governor on his healthcare plan. But the letter from the AARP to the governor starts out, "On behalf of AARP's California's 3.2 million members." That's pretty impressive that AARP has 3.2 million members in the state of California alone. And they requested that he sign AB 1542. So you AARP members up here, thank you. Right.
Thank you. And then just a brief comments from me, actually maybe not quite as brief as normal, but first of all, a couple of things that I've been able to attend. We had a wonderful run through the orchards that Sore did in the Tierra Hada Valley. A couple hundred runners came from all over the county to enjoy the nice community out there as well as the ability to do some nice exercise, very impressive. We had people over seventy years old out there running and looking great. I also wanted to point out, since we're talking about Tierra Hada Valley, that this Wednesday evening at seven PM at the Ronald Reagan Library, all the east county cities are going to be getting together to discuss tightening or strengthening the protections out there for the Tierra Hada Green Belt. This is something, an offshoot from the Board of Supervisors I brought forward to see that we can get a staff person, Chris Stevens of our Resource Management Agency will be giving a presentation there and hopefully we'll get some movement towards some greater protections, be able to hear from the east county cities and see if they want to participate in doing that. Additionally, I had the honor of being able to attend the enrobing of Judge Daly and Judge Young, two new judges to our Superior Court system, which I think we're very fortunate to have those two members join. And then additionally, just again, how awesome it is that we do have such active judges that help with those people who are in need. They've actually brought forward some county programs that are in existence now to help people. I also serve on the Southern California Association of Governments. In the SCAG meeting that I attended last week, we're finishing up the Regional Comprehensive Plan for the six county region of SCAG, and also the Regional Transportation Plan, and we're looking at doing those in unison. There are some concerns about whether they should be done together with one environmental document, but it seems to be the most cost-effective way, and also helps to bring that unity of transportation and land use that I think we so much need. Also wanted to mention that the Santa Rosa Valley has formed a CERT team, and they are being trained now by the fire department, and that's just really neat to see with over twenty people out there in the Community Emergency Response Team training. Additionally, I did want to point out that this week is going to be the retirement party for Ginger Girardi, our Ventura County Transportation Commission Executive Director. So that's going to be a pretty big change for our county. I think just probably since the beginning of the commission, she has been the executive director. A new individual from Sandbag, the San Bernardino Associate Governments, will be coming on board. Darren.
Warren.
Warren? Thank you. I just think of him as Darren. So that's pretty neat. And then I don't want to fail to mention that it's also Jackson Brown's birthday today. Oh, one other thing. The last thing too is, I know probably most of you have already seen the article about the EPA allowing for a pesticide that can replace methyl bromide. And this pesticide is, seems even more lethal. It's methyl iodide, talks about how you can get, if it gets on your skin, it can cause blisters. If you breathe it into your lungs, it causes severe respiratory problems. It's just one of those things, while methyl bromide is bad, to replace it with something equally, if not worse. I personally am very concerned about that. But I realize, you know, it's really important for our number one crop out here, particularly strawberries. But that is a concern, and I don't know if the county wants to weigh in on that. It would have to be approved by the State Department of Pesticide Regulation to have it used out here in Ventura County. That concludes almost my public comments. I would also ask that we go ahead and adjourn for the individual on my list.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I might just mention, on Friday also, one, the board does have a resolution for Ms. Girardi, will be presented Thursday. But on Friday, there will be, in Santa Barbara, a meeting that's been organized by the Corrections Division of the state, and it is to have the Santa Barbara, Santa Luis, Visco, and Ventura County leadership come in and talk about the proposed corrections reform, reentry proposal, and kind of hear and listen and have questions as to, you know, how will that work? How will it be funded? What guarantees are there? So I know that certainly the sheriff's leadership team, I'm planning to be there, they'll be talking to the state to try and get more information and pin them down to some numbers if possible.
Thank you.
And that's in Santa Barbara on Friday.
Thank you. And then tonight, at the Thousand Oaks City Council, they will be discussing the possibility of signing a memo of agreement to assist with the sharing of easements to allow for the equestrian portion of the Santa Rosa Park. However, they don't actually have the memo of agreement before them, they're just going to talk about it. This is something that both our staffs agreed to put on our mutual agendas on April third, and the city has not done that to this point. But we are looking at a successful phase one, at least getting that part going and getting to be able to use the grant funds that we have for it. So that should be an exciting night tonight. Okay, with that, we can now go to our nine AM time certance. Item sixteen, this is a report on the management audit of the treasure tax collector, and Ms. Robinson?
Yes, Marty Robinson with the County Execs Office. The last spring subsequent to hearing the audit report on the Public Guardian Public Administrator's Office, your board asked us to proceed with an audit on the treasure tax collector. That audit is completed, it's before you. There are some, in general, it is identified that the findings are positive, there are several findings. We have with us today Scott Bryant, as well as Kurt McMillan from the audit firm of Thompson, Cobb, and Basilio and Associates who performed this audit, as well as the Public Guardian Public Administrator Audit. In addition, in your package, you have the treasure tax collector's response, and I know that Mr. Matheny is also here today to comment. So if you have any questions, first I bring up the auditors and then Mr. Matheny.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. It's a pleasure again to be here with you. I'm a fan of Jackson Brown, I'm glad to know this is his birthday. You know, we're happy to respond to and hopefully answer any questions you might have.
Okay, so does the board have some questions on this? I have, you know, obviously there's been some good improvements that I understand. We're just looking right now at the treasure tax collector department. And you looked at five specific items that you reviewed.
Correct.
One of the things that I find, and it isn't just specific to the treasure tax collector office, was talking about the personnel management. Department employee performance evaluations are, for the most part, up to date and completed in a timely manner. However, completed evaluations provide limited useful information on actual performance and accomplishing department workload, and have limited feedback to employees to enhance their job performance. And why I say it's not necessarily specific to this one department, I don't think our county has a generic performance evaluation form that is used. And that's something that I would like to ask the CEO if we do have one, or that's up to each department head to determine how they're going to do their performance evaluation. It seems to me that having that consistency among the departments and being able to have the input of our Human Resource Department on how to assist those managers in making sure they have a good performance evaluation, I think would be beneficial countywide. I don't know if we have someone here that can answer that question.
If the question is, is there a standard form that's used throughout the county? I think I'm reasonably confident in saying there is not. I think that there is probably a common thread through the evaluations, but as far as having every department do it exactly the same way, I think we have given them the latitude to add to and take away from the old standard. It used to be a one or two-page report.
And it's nice to have that flexibility. Each department's a little bit different in their goals and all, but on the other hand, it's also nice to have that support from Human Resources about how you can get the most out of your performance evaluation. And it appears at least this one department could be getting more out of it. So that is, again, something not specific to your review, as is the next point I'd like to make. And that is, you know, there was a larger concern back before I came on the board about the different silos in the county, that each department, you know, operates kind of in and of itself, and there's not a lot of sharing. And I know a lot of those barriers have been broken down fortunately. We've seen some great collaboration among departments. But one of the things that I saw with the issues that occurred, and I guess it's probably for the next agenda item with the Public Guardians Office, was just kind of so many of the different departments interacted with this one department that was having trouble. And yet, there weren't any flags, red flags. And I don't know if you were able to look at that or not, but that to me is, would be very beneficial. And maybe that has to be done internally, you know, through our CEO's office to look at, here are the different departments, and here are opportunities to get those red flags known. Was there any of looking at the, you know, interactions between departments?
There was, and there are, you know, two other key departments that interact with the treasure tax collector, one being the assessor and the other being the auditor controller. And to some extent, you know, there are times where the silos are dysfunctional and times where the silos have benefit. And in this case, because of the functions, having those separate And in this case, because of the functions, having those separated among those three, I think adds to the internal controls, you know, because you have the assessor that values the property, the Treasury Tax Collector does the billing, and the auditor controller, you know, makes sure that it all matches up. And so, you know, we found good coordination among the three. There was one area, the reconciliation of trust accounts and balancing of those, that, you know, there probably could have been a little bit better communication to resolve some issues that had been ongoing that were, you know, relatively minor. We had recommendations to address those. But, you know, again, you know, having the, and I think this is by design, having the functions kind of split that way adds value in terms of, you know, no one department without collaboration or, you know, conspiratorial collaboration with the other two could really do much to defraud the county.
Thank you for that. And then just one final question from me, and that is regarding the trust fund issue. I always look at things like, what's the worst that can happen? You know, what's the worst-case scenario with the information that you found? If you can comment on that.
You know, with the internal controls that are in place, and again, with the, we always look for the worst-case scenario. You know, what's the worst that could happen? And what's there to prevent that from occurring? And, you know, again, with the separation between the assessor, the tax collector, and the auditor controller, just the way the system's set up. Now, you know, you referred to the PAPG. We have the same kind of checks in place, you know, where we have the Public Guardian, we have the, you know, the District Attorney or the County Council role. We have the courts, we have the public defender role. And in each of those cases, those checks and balances were not working. In this case, you know, the assessor's doing their job, the auditor controller's doing their job very effectively. And so we have those checks and balances. So, you know, the worst that could occur is that, you know, there'd be a, you know, a misappropriation of funds, you know, either tax collections or investment funds. And we found, you know, we diligently looked at the controls to make sure that those things didn't occur, including, you know, wire transfers of investment funds, those kinds of things. And, you know, really didn't find any risks that were not appropriately managed.
Are there other questions, Supervisor Dennis?
Yeah, thank you. Number one, I appreciate the time and effort on this report, and I appreciate the Treasury Tax Collector being very involved in this review. What I'm most interested in is the area on the management of internal controls. And I point out on page nine in your Management of Internal Controls, you make reference in that top paragraph to the fact that when it comes to Ventura County Self-Assessment Program, their submission was not timely. This was the submission of the Treasury Tax Collector's Department, their submission of inquiries to the auditor controller. And then you said, besides the self-assessment program, the Treasury Tax Collector assesses internal control risk. And later down, a few lines down, you say, "We believe that the assessment and management of risk in the department's business process could be enhanced with a more regular and documented departmental process for identifying and assessing risk." Now, your recommendation there too, then, management should consider the development of an internal risk assessment process, such as an internal survey questionnaire and identification and assessment of risk of department business practices. And obviously, I'm looking for those things that we want to make sure, wouldn't have anything that could bleed over from our Public Guardian prospect. So I'd like you to comment on that in terms of just filling me in a little bit more in terms of what your sense is with that recommendation.
Sure. You know, I think our, the gist of the finding and recommendation is that, you know, we felt that the Treasury Tax Collector Department did a good job of assessing risk on an ongoing basis in an informal way. You know, and I think it's something that's, especially compared to the PAPG operation. They're very conscious about, they're very conscientious about, they're very, you know, in a sense, aggressive about looking at where are the risks. And again, opposed to the PAPG, they have very well-written and documented policies and procedures that they very much follow. And that was a striking difference between, you know, although the PAPG was on their way to doing that, striking difference between the operation here and the operation of the PAPG. What we're saying is, you know, that's good, the informal systems are in place. It could be strengthened by more formal, which the CSA, the Controlled Self-Assessment, is a formal process from the auditor controller, that they should, you know, and they do now, participate in a timely manner. They should have back then. And we're saying, you know, that can also be strengthened. And the informal process is going to be strengthened by formalizing it, you know. And I think in their response, they say, you know, "We weekly, we talk about it." We're saying, fine, that's kind of an informal, ongoing effort. But do a more formal, you know, quarterly or so on. Sit down and do a formal questionnaire and a formal assessment and document it.
Great. And if I could turn your attention to page 13, thank you for that answer. Recommendation five on page 13, to improve internal controls responsibility for the reconciliation of the bankruptcy trust and trust parcel...
Recommendation five?
Recommendation five, page 13, yeah. To improve internal controls responsibility for the reconciliation of the bankruptcy trust and trust parcel maps should be reassigned to individuals not directly managing the accounts. That's that sort of dual...
Separation of duties.
Separation of duties and stuff. And is this the only place where you found this issue?
Yes.
Right, okay. And to what, I'm going to ask the Treasury, I'm sure, in terms of all of these policies. And then you talk, you make a reference to, "Written policies and procedures should be out there clear enough so that if anybody knew coming into the department, they can clearly understand that also," right?
Correct.
All right. And then my question for the Treasury Tax Collector is... What's that?
He has a card in.
Okay, well, I guess with the CEO, Treasury Tax Collector, everybody, you know, these 20 recommendations, are we, well, we'll hear from the Treasury Tax Collector and I'll ask that question afterwards, right, with regard to that. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Foy?
Yeah, thank you. Looking at this, overall, this was a pretty good, you came out, and most of this is in pretty good order, and things are doing pretty well. As, come from the business background and doing as you do most audits, there's always things that we find, right?
Always.
Always. And, you know, if you could find that perfect guy who runs an organization that's everything perfect, we'd all be out of business, so. But it's good to see. I mean, I like to see that most of these things are done well. I like to see that we see some things with training. They're trying to do a really good job with training, because that's always the key, to keep training people as people move on and change. It looks like they're staffed pretty adequately for what they're doing. So I noticed that...
I think they're staffed adequately, and they do a good job of managing the staff. As we pointed out, you know, the workload is highly seasonal.
Yes.
There's one time where there's not as much to do of, you know, the actual collection, and other times, they've got people lined up out the door. And they tend to manage the workload so that people keep busy in the off-season. And yet, you know, they're able to keep up when it's at their peak.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point, because that's a difficult thing to do, to try to not keep the staff, keep them there, know what I can put off and do. So I was glad to see that, because that is usually hard for business, you know, for organizations to do and to do that. And then I noticed that we talked here, though, it said, "However, the structure does not provide clear lines of authority, supervisory level in the Public Service and Accounting Division." So maybe from the tax collector, just using some of you or who else to help do that. I know that always trying to find that skill from the outside to help you through that is good. But just overall, most of this looked good. I was glad to see that. And as Supervisor Parks said, we're making great progress. Things are good. And so you were pretty happy with what came out of this.
Yeah, especially after, you know, looking at the public, the Public Guardian side. I think the management on this side is, in supervision, is much stronger and in place. And, you know, the functions are well-laid out, and, you know, they're much more straightforward. I think that's important to say, that there's more complexity on the Public Guardian side because of the social service, you know, kinds of issues that we don't have on this side.
Right.
But yeah, I think especially comparatively, it's a much tighter ship.
Yeah, well, it goes back to the core of what the Treasury Tax Collector does, and they do a good job of exactly what they do. And then the added piece is interesting, so.
And then also the fact that the assessor and the auditor controller are on top of things. Where with the Public Administrator, Public Guardian, the checks and balances that were in place or were meant to be in place were not really functioning.
Right, right.
So it's all, you have to look at the whole picture.
Yeah, well, great. I appreciate that. Well, thank you very much for your work.
Thank you. And Supervisor Long?
Yes, I too would thank you, thank you for your work. I think you made some solid recommendations here. And as you said, you generally, I think, important for the public is to, generally, you found that the Treasury Tax Collector Department is in compliance with state regulations and the County Board of Supervisors' investment policies, and in compliance with what the public expects from that department and certainly the oversight that is on that department. I think you made some solid recommendations regarding the need to do further work with employees to allow them to have feedback, both to enhance their job performance, but certainly with the workings of the department. The comment that you made in here that you questioned whether the average rating accurately reflected actual employee performance. And I, I'm not sure how, that's on page 28, when you were talking about finding 24. But the recommendation is more important, that they continue to work with the evaluation so that the employees' accomplishments are evaluated and the feedback is free-flowing. Anything to add to that as far as just...
Well, I think, you know, our point there was that, you know, obviously, the role of the Treasury Tax Collector is to, you know, do a certain work, to process tax payments, to get the bills out, to answer the phones, to answer taxpayers' questions. It's all workload. And they have mechanisms to measure how each employee contributes to that workload, like how many telephone calls they answered, how many tax payments they took over the counter. You know, so given that the role of the Treasury Tax Collector is to get this work accomplished, and the reason employees are there is to get this work accomplished, you would expect to see in the performance evaluations some discussion or information about how each employee contributed to getting that work accomplished. And we found, we found nothing like that. That's our main recommendation, is, you know, there was a wide variance. You had some employees that were, you know, right on top of the phones, or always popping up to answer a question, you know, at the counter, and other employees that were, you know, as in any organization, you know, less inclined to do that. And so, you know, their relative contribution to getting the workload accomplished should be included in the performance evaluation.
Okay.
And I do note, it's nice to see also the succession planning in terms of the Chief Investment Officer. I think that's very noteworthy. And then I recall reading how beneficial that extra staff person was that the Board approved for the office that shares some support for two or so of the sub-departments. So it's good to see, definitely, while it wasn't our primary concern, we did want to look at this office too and see what we can do, if anything, to make sure that it's well-supported. I think overall, I agree with Supervisor Foy too. We're seeing a very positive report here. With that, then, is there a motion on this particular one, which is just to receive and file the report on the Treasury Tax Collector Department?
Did you say we had a card in?
Oh, I apologize. Our Treasurer, Larry Matheny. I just started looking at the time.
I was putting on my roller skates, and anyway, to just go enjoy. Good morning, Madam Chairman, and members of the Board, Mr. Johnson. I certainly wanted to make myself available to you to take care of any questions that you might have as a result of the report. I, one of the things that was gratifying to me was the documentation of what we're able to do with the limited resources with which we have to work. During the funding issues that we had several years ago, we were required to reexamine the way we do business and to do it with fewer people. One of the ways we adjusted, as an example, given our seasonal workload, we used to deal with that by bringing in a significant number of extra help people to work anywhere from about 60 days for training purposes, so that they could cover telephones, to roughly two weeks to deal with the work in the back of the office in handling the mailed-in payments. We've gone from hiring 16 seasonal workers each collection cycle to now four or fewer. And we're getting the work done faster. And that's because we couldn't do it the old way. We had to do it in a new way, in a more efficient way. And I'm just so proud of my staff and the way in which they have risen to the cause and to the need as we do our part and did our part during those particularly challenging years to try and make do with what we had. We've carried that forward, and obviously, times are a little bit better now than they were then. But we're not seeking to build any empires within the areas of my responsibility. I'm just very pleased that there's some recognition that we manage our people well, we manage the workflow well, and get the job done with a minimum of muss and fuss. There's very few people out there of the 240-some thousand property owners in the County of Ventura who are happy to pay taxes. But we try to make that process as pleasant as it can possibly be. And I think we've been successful at that.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, did you want to comment?
I just wanted to underline what Larry has just said. Your Board knows that we have been engaged in what we call Benchmark Study. We've been looking, or have commenced looking at how Ventura County compares to the other 58 counties in terms of income and how that income is distributed amongst departments. And one of the findings that has not come to you yet, but that underlines what Larry is saying, is that as we compare ourselves statewide, our income is below the average of those comparable counties, about 93 cents on the dollar. But generally speaking, the major functions that have been reviewed have been funded at an average level of the other departments or the other counties. But in the case of the Treasurer's Office, it was found that they actually were funded below that average level. And yet, both this audit and the experience has been, what Mr. Matheny has just described to you, that they are doing better with fewer people and meeting the requirements of the law. So I think while it's much more dramatic when something goes wrong on control and money is lost, most of the time, we don't pay a lot of attention to what you might call the inefficiencies of government, where money is spent year in and year out. That maybe with a better system, money would be saved. So in the case of the Treasurer's Office, by retooling and redesigning the way in which they handle their work, tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars are avoided in costs. So I think that kind of, to balance out some of the beating Larry has taken over the last year. I want to thank him for that. I also want to comment on what Supervisor Foy said, that when you look at these things, we wouldn't, none of us would be doing our job very well if we couldn't find something that could be improved. And I said, we try to operate under the theory that continuous improvement is always the goal. No matter how good we're doing things, you can always do, take each step and make it a little better. But in the case where you're operating with less resource and doing a comparable or better job than most, I think that's something to be celebrated. So, thank you.
Thank you. Congressman, Supervisor Dennis?
Just my question, as I said at the beginning, to compliment both the review by the auditors and your cooperation and in your responses, you very timely have already adopted many of these recommendations, you know, so I'm immediately in terms of that. But my question overall, and it's for the CEO and the Treasury Tax Collector, where will we be in another year? Will we go back over these 20 recommendations a year from now and confirm where we are with these 20 recommendations? Do you have a process that's going to do that? Is that going to come to the Board?
Well, I'll make this invitation. My intention is, as I recall the 20-some recommendations, there is, close to half of them are dealing with the documentation of policies and procedures or updating them in the accounting unit of the Tax Collector's Office. My objective is to have working policies and procedures in place by the beginning of November and to work with them through our heavy collection period and then make revisions or finalize them in the month of January. And I will happily provide them through our analysts to Mr. Johnson and his staff as an accountability issue. I have no problem with that.
Great, I'd just like to have, yeah, some sense of where we are with these 20 recommendations.
Very reasonable.
And overall, certainly, this is an indication of a good, strong effort on your part in terms of... terms of the department and the things that are going on there. So, my compliments.
Thank you. Supervisor Long, you have?
Yes, I'd agree with that. I think it would be good for all of us to continue to work with you and your small but mighty staff to make sure we're giving you the tools you need to do the job for the public. And certainly, the Treasury Tax Collector component is most important to the public. The other side, the other piece I think is important to us and to the parties who invest with us is the investment policies and practices and as the challenge of succession planning for that. I think we have, there's been an outstanding job done by our lead investment officer historically for years, and we're very proud of that, and I know you are too. And I think that no one wants to get surprised at the last minute so that we prepare for it. That's all I'd say, just prepare so that we are able to continue the confidence and the investments for the taxpayers and for the parties who invest with us.
Well, if I could respond to that, I think fundamental to moving forward with the idea of succession planning is knowing to the degree that we can see into the future to have the information we need. And obviously, when a person decides to retire, that's a very personal decision or decides to move on to another career. I think at the core of the CIO's position in particular is the ability, the trust factor of understanding that I maintain a good relationship with the CIO. And I know that, because I need to be able to speak candidly, are you leaving in six months? Are you leaving in a year and a half? Are you leaving in five years? I need to be able to do that and to know that the answer I get back is from the heart. And I'm very pleased that we have that in place. We have that core of trust, I believe, that's in place. And I think that's going to serve this county well and allow us to make this process as smooth as it possibly can be.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I don't see other questions, and I was wondering if we can get a motion on our...
Move to receive and file.
We have a motion, a second to receive and file the Treasury Tax Collector Management Audit. We would normally go on to the next item on our 9:00 a.m. time cert, which is the Public Guardian Audit. But because we have so many people in the audience, I'd like to hold off and go to our 9:30 time cert. And at this one, the first we would go to would be the proclamation on Adoption Permanency Month. I know we had some very patient young ladies here just a short while ago, and hopefully they will come back into the room. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Supervisor Steve Bennett.
Thank you very much. And I see Judge Cody is working her way down the front, and we have a number of key people here for this. We also have two adopted families attending the meeting. I don't know if they are in the room or if they've gone back out into the lobby. What's that?
Justice.
Right. Well, I was gonna, yeah, I just wanted to alert those families if they are interested in coming back in. We have Judge Toy White here also, the CEO, Michael Planet, DEO Cheryl Canatster. And then Judy Weber is going to hear from HSA. And my understanding is Judge Cody is going to say a few words, and Judy Weber is also going to say a few words. So I'm going to keep my comments very brief. Just overall, I want to emphasize that once a month, we really make a special focus in terms of adoptions and how valuable adoptions are in our whole foster care program. There is nothing better in terms of a result for the child than to have permanent parents actually take them in in terms of adoption. And so I'm just pleased that again this year, we have these great people that are really working with intelligence and compassion for these children. I'm going to tell you a couple of quick statistics and then turn it over to Judge Cody. 485,000, that's the number of child abuse and neglect cases that we have every year in California. 26,000 children enter foster care in California annually. 77,000 children in California are living apart from their families in child welfare and supervised out-of-home care. Half the children in foster care in California have been away from their families for two or more years. 36,000 children leaving foster care between July 2005 and June 2006. 55% reunited with their families, 20% were adopted, and that's what we're focusing on, this permanency and this adoption aspect of this today. And so if we could, I'd like to turn it over to Judge Cody, and I'll come down with the resolution.
Good morning, and thank you very much for calling us out of order first, but also recognizing National Adoption Month here in Ventura County. It obviously is a national recognition day, or actually, it's a month, but we will have an open adoption I'll talk about in just a moment. I'm going to keep my comments very brief because I know there's a few more people. But you can't talk about adoption without also recognizing where these children usually, not always, come from, which is the foster care system, as Supervisor Bennett mentioned. And it is, under the law and otherwise, morally and every other way you can think of it, the best solution or result for these children who are not able to reunite with their families. And so I am very pleased that every year I'm here so far, while I'm in the current assignment that I have, which is adoptions on Friday afternoon only, to be able to have you recognize this as an important day. I believe the, this year, the National Adoption Month nationally is attempting to focus on teen adoptions. And as I believe I may have stated last year, adoptions can occur for children who are infants and children who are 17 years old in 364 days. All of those children need permanent homes, and they all are looking for permanent homes. And by focusing on adoptions as a possibility, I think that you are promoting that here in our county statewide and nationwide, and I want to thank you. Lastly, we have an open adoption day. Normally, adoptions are confidential, and only family members and friends are allowed to attend. But on November 2nd, I think I have that very right, a Friday afternoon, it will be open to the public, and each of you, I invite you personally to come attend. It is a very happy Friday, lots of balloons, pictures, gifts, and it's a very nice way to end your week and go into the weekend. So I hope you can attend. But thank you very much.
Hi, and good morning, members of the board, Mr. Johnson. As you may know, the Human Services Agency, Children and Family Services, operates a full adoption program. With its child welfare program, we provide a full range of services to court-dependent children who are unable to reunify with their families. These services include coordination of adoptive home evaluations with private adoption agencies, adoptive placement and oversight, case management services to acquire counseling and secure adoption assistance program resources. In addition, we also provide stepparent adoptions and termination of parental rights investigative reports. In fiscal year 0607, we were able to finalize 76 adoptions, and that was a great year for us to do that. We worked closely with Judge Cody in completing all of these adoptions, and we believe that by completing a greater number of adoptions each year, we're giving these children an opportunity to grow up in a stable environment. So we're very pleased with our success this year and with our adoptions program. And I'd like to take a minute and introduce our adoptions unit, many of whom who are here. Could you just go ahead and stand? Yeah, there's our social workers that work so hard. And then I think most importantly, I want to introduce two adoptive parents who are here today. First of all, we have Lynette Pennings and her daughter Brittany, so I wanted them to come on up, and Richard and Susan Padilla who are here as well.
Thank you for this opportunity to address you. I'd like to tell you about a couple of my heroes. First, I need to qualify something. Adoption itself is not a heroic act. It's a very ordinary one. It's simply an act of commitment, like caregiving or marriage. It's done every day, but it's very, very necessary, and I wish that every child that needs a family could get one. On one level, it really is just that simple. On another level, it's much more difficult, and that's why I have heroes. One of them is my adoptions worker, Rhonda Dinkow, who was a social worker for us, and she just simply refused to be hogtied by a one-size-fits-all system. And she kept the needs of my children first and foremost, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Rhonda. Another hero that is with us here is my CASA worker, Pat Copley, who through her long-term commitment to our family, became a lifetime friend. And then my third hero is only 16 years old, and she refused to come up here with me, but she's back there. I want to tell you just a little bit about her because she is a true success story. This lovely young woman really knows what it means to suffer. She was born into miserable circumstances, weighted down with the baggage of prenatal drug and alcohol abuse, neglected and left unprotected. In the 11 years that she lived before she came into my life, she was abused and betrayed by nearly every adult who had an obligation to protect and nurture her. If anybody had a reason to give up in bitterness, she did. But instead, this extraordinary child chose to put her faith in a stranger who promised to take care of her. She chose to look outside of the hopelessness of her own baggage, beyond the limitations inflicted on her by others, beyond the ties that choke and smother, and beyond her own negative expectations. She chose not just to detach herself from destructive influences, which alone would have been a staggering thing, but she also chose to attach herself to people and ideas and values that she wanted for her own. She chose to grow through her confusion and pain and live a life different from the one she was born into. I can't tell you that my child is perfect, and I certainly can't tell you that I'm a perfect parent. But I can tell you that finalizing the adoption made a huge difference in my daughter's sense of security and her ability to move forward. After four years of anxiety that this time something might go wrong in court, she's finally free to set her face completely towards the future. And it's a fabulous future because my kid wants to give back. Someday, she might want to adopt some kids of her own. She's been to several mission trips in Mexico, inner-city San Francisco. She's helped rebuild houses after Hurricane Katrina. She's preparing right now to go on another mission trip during fall break because, in her words, "It helps me remember to do things that I forget otherwise and to be somebody I want to become." And there's one more thing I can tell you that I am so very, very proud, that this extraordinary child chose me to be her mom. Thanks for your time and attention, and thanks for focusing on one real solution for the hurting children in our community.
Richard and Susan, you want to say a few words?
Steve, I got to say that that's quite a child, but that's quite a mom.
Yeah. And I'd just say that as a teenager, you're not supposed to be perfect. It's okay.
Sure is. We're just going to wing it.
Good morning, everyone. We started out as foster parents two and a half years ago, and we've had the pleasure of adopting two beautiful kids. We have a two-and-a-half-year-old little boy. His name is Christian. And an eight-month-year-old little girl who is named Ashley. We just finished completing the adoption about three weeks ago with her. When we first came into the foster care adopt, it was because we had some issues concealing children and...
But we do have a seven-year-old.
We do have a seven-year-old. And our thoughts were more, we want children, we want to adopt. After going through the phases and working with the courts and social workers and working with the children, you kind of realize that this is all for the kids.
It's emotional.
We went through with the little boy. He's special needs, and we didn't know that at the time when we got him. And we almost...
Lost him.
Lost him about a year ago. And it's made us grow, and even made us love these kids even more who don't have kids, parents or anybody to turn to. And it's become a really big passion for us to try and give these kids a home. We're down to our second, and we're probably going to make room for another. We have a big home and a big heart. Our son has a big heart. And we've even learned, on working on a project with our older son, your teacher had asked him, "What do you want to be when you grow up?" He goes, "I want to be a pediatrician. When I grow up, I want to be a pediatrician because I want to help little kids." So it was kind of a full circle for me, hearing that from our biological son, that he's listening and he's seen, and he understands that growing up with a big heart and giving lots of love and TLC, as an example with our son, who is special needs, you can bring up somebody with a lot of TLC, they can grow up and live a healthy, normal life.
Because basically, when he was born, he shouldn't have survived, and he did. And so when we got him, he was getting sick every month. He had cataracts, so he had surgery. He has big glasses. We call him Mr. Magoo now. So basically, all up until March of 2006, he got this virus that he wasn't getting better. We had to send him to cottage. He was there for 12 days. They induced coma for four. I mean, we were lucky he came back alive. So to see him now, he's just our miracle baby because, you know, that's twice we almost lost him. He should have been here when he was born. We almost lost him at nine months, and now he's striking. And you can tell he's doing so much better. He's stronger, he's getting his therapy. I'm going to doctor's offices for visits like every three months, and he's got like five doctors. He's got like a pediatric cardiologist, he's got a pulmonologist, he's got a geneticist in L.A. Children's Hospital. I go to San Sim Clinic in Santa Barbara. I mean, I'm going everywhere, but it's getting done so he can have a productive life and as normal as we can possibly make it because, you know, sometimes we're just not normal. You know, get a little twitch here and there. So, you know, he's a happy child, and you can see it. And you can tell he's loved, he's very loved. And Ashley, she can dry me up a wall because she's just crazy sometimes, but she's a very healthy baby. When we got her, she was just completely healthy. There's nothing wrong with her. And then our seven-year-old, like I said, like he said, he's a very lovable child as it is, so he sees all of this. And there was a time, and I like to tell this story because there's not a lot of kids his age. He was five years old when this happened. He was in kindergarten. So we were doing, we had a PTA meeting, and there was daycare there, and all the kids were playing, you know, they were all walking. There was just one little boy in a wheelchair because he has cerebral palsy. My son was the only one playing with him. And this is when we had Christian at the time. So he knows, you know, everybody, to him, it looks the same. They're fine. So it's a big change. I wouldn't change it for the world. So we already told our social workers not to close our cases. We have to open.
Good, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We started our board meeting out this morning with somebody talking to us about humble leadership. And having these two parents come and these three parents, these two families come and speak with us today just reminds me that we're all touching this program from the periphery of some great parents out there and some great children working their way through the whole foster system, the adoption system. And we're the ones that are honored by being able to be in your presence. And I just hope you would honor us one more time by coming down and letting us have our picture taken with you. All right? Would you be willing to do that? Right? Okay. You comfortable? Board members, if you want to come down, right? Okay, right over here.
Judge Cody and Michael and...
And the...
Yeah, come on in. And Judy and Diana from the program. We'll be in the back. You guys can be right there. Come on in here. I thought it was coming out.
Thank you.
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 You can get teary-eyed, and it makes it hard to give these presentations. Not that he doesn't get teary-eyed, but... We'll go on, Ben, to our next proclamation. And I believe Supervisor Foy is going to do this one because he's as close to Scottish as I think we have up here. No?
No. Couple of good Irishmen, Scottishmen here. What can we say? Irish and Scottish. What? Celtic, yeah, right. John, you gonna come down? John's coming down here, and we want to present something today for the Hillside Games. I mean, the Seaside Island Games that are at Seaside Park in Ventura during the October 12th, 13th, and 14th next weekend, right?
That's right.
That's right.
Coming up.
And the county's been part of this for a while, and it's Scotland, Ireland. As a good Irishman myself, and we're excited about this. You want to make a couple of comments, and I'll read something after?
Well, I do. First, though, I'm amazed at this group that preceded us, and we're honored to be on the same diocese as them. Madam Chair and Supervisors, we thank you so much for the support the county has lent the Seaside Island Games over the years. And I say over the years, we've only had five years. This is our fifth outing, but it's grown immensely. We'll have over 20,000 people this year if everyone shows up. And we hope to have a great time. We know how busy you are, and again, we thank you for taking the time out just to talk about this bit of frivolity. But it's not frivolous exactly because those of us who are fortunate enough to be able to trace our families and to know from whence we came, we attach certain importance to that. So I know that any who can point to their ancestors, I think, are better for it. And not just because you're Celtic or Scottish or Irish, but whatever you are, if you can tie to your roots, it's very important. And we do that with aplomb on the field. We also have a lot of fun. There's a lot of music, a lot of athletics, a lot of dancing going on, and it's just a great, great time, and we hope that you will all come. Madam Chair, if you could join us, it would be wonderful. But I know you're busy.
No, I would very much like to. I heard wonderful things about it last year. What was it that there's like a throwing contest? What were you throwing?
Well, there's a K-Bird. It looks like a telephone pole, and they throw that and...
I mean, how can you not go? Are they wearing the kilts when they're throwing?
Yep. Then throwing, exactly.
Seeing Burling and the stones throw laws, I gotta go.
Supervisor Long's been out there with us, so she knows. And she also knows about some of the great music, don't you? About some of the wonderful things that we've experienced out there. Thank you so much. We're proud to be here today.
I would love to attend. Supervisor Foy has a resolution.
We'd like to present this resolution to you, and we thank you for what you're doing here. It's wonderful. I know that people have gone up against us before, but it's a great time. I know people want to ask what you're wearing today, but we're not going to...
Are we on television?
Keep quiet. Anyway, I want to say thank you so much.
We're proud of this, and we appreciate the recognition and the honor and the partnership that we appeal with the county. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'd like to have our man Foy challenge your man in the stone-throwing competition.
Thank you.
We got some big guys.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have two resolutions somewhat similar. And one is to recognize Mental Health Awareness Week. And I believe we have representatives of NAMI, the National Alliance of Mental Illness. And we see the President, as well as we have the Bipolar Disorder Awareness Day. We have, I think, the same representatives. Lou, do you want to come down too? First of all, let's do the more broad one, which is the Mental Health Awareness Week. And this is the week of October 7th through 13th. And it reads, "Whereas several mental illnesses such as schizophrenia, bipolar disorder, major depression, obsessive-compulsive disorders, severe anxiety disorders, borderline personality disorder, and post-traumatic stress disorders affect one in five families in the United States. And whereas severe mental illnesses are more common than cancer, diabetes, and heart disease, and are the number-one reason for hospital admissions. And whereas severe mental illnesses have been scientifically proven to be highly treatable illnesses of the brain. And whereas scientific research is producing tremendous breakthroughs in the understanding of mental illnesses resulting in more effective treatments that allow people to reclaim full and productive lives. And whereas severe mental illnesses continue to be shrouded in stigma and discrimination from society's prejudices, causing those who are affected to be cast as second-class citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors proclaims October 17th through 13th as Mental Illness Awareness Week and calls upon all Ventura County residents, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness about the understanding of mental illness and breaking down those stigmas." And I'll present this to you on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and to the National Alliance of Mentally Ill. And I'll present this to you. And if you'd like to give us some comments, and then we'll do the bipolar one, which is a major part of it all, isn't it?
I'm Retan Bobnani, president of NAMI Ventura County. That's the National Alliance on Mental Illness. And I have with us in the audience several folks from NAMI. If you'd stand and show yourself. As you know, we at NAMI are all affected by mental illness in our families, and we thank you, the Board of Supervisors, for this proclamation of both Mental Illness Awareness Week as well as Bipolar Disorder Awareness Day today. When you walk into... I'm going to steal parts of your speech. When you walk into a shopping center or walk down the street and you see somebody who's looking a little scary and is a little bit smelly and a little bit grungy and maybe talking to himself, you've probably seen someone who has a mental illness. And this could well be one of our friends or family members. So we are here as NAMI to sort of advocate on behalf of these folks. A lot of our family members do get treatment through the county systems, the behavioral health systems and other agencies, private as well as county. But there are many who do not, and it's our job at NAMI to sort of raise the awareness for these folks who are out there and who are struggling. So we thank you for recognizing this one week where we especially want to highlight our weaknesses in this area and to recognize these difficult people. But I also want to thank all of you, and I have some silver ribbons for you like I'm wearing. So you can... You can recognize mentally ill awareness. You can help us there, especially if you'd wear this this week, that would help us. And I have some newsletters. I also want to especially thank Supervisor Carps for her special support of our NAMI WACHS effort, the fundraisers. She's been a supporter from the beginning, and she's had teams for the first couple of years. And this is a...
I love it. Thank you so much.
Photographs of the events over the last three years. Thank you, Supervisor Carps.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is so nice. Thank you. I'm very much... Shall I go ahead and do this one, and then you have an opportunity this week too? This is the Bipolar Disorder Awareness Day, and more than 2.3 million Americans are affected by bipolar disorder, a serious brain disorder that causes extreme shifts in mood, energy, and functioning. And whereas misdiagnosis is a major problem for people with bipolar disorder, seven out of 10 people receive at least one misdiagnosis, and many wait up to 10 years before the accurate diagnosis is made. And whereas late adolescence is an essential time for education and awareness as the majority of people with bipolar disorder experience an onset of symptoms before the age of 20. Whereas the National Alliance on Mental Illness is recognizing October 11th as Bipolar Disorder Awareness Day during Mental Health Awareness Week. And whereas Bipolar Disorder Awareness Day seeks to increase people's understanding of the devastating impact bipolar disorder symptoms have on the lives of undiagnosed individuals as well as diagnosed individuals, their families and friends, and seeks to promote early bipolar disorder detection through mental health screening. And whereas while there is no cure for bipolar disorder, there are effective treatment options that can help those with bipolar disorder to lead fulfilling lives, and hopefully there will be a cure soon. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors proclaims October 9th, 2007, as Bipolar Disorder Awareness Day and urges all Ventura County residents to educate themselves on bipolar disorder and mental illness, to attend mental health screenings to aid in early detection, and if necessary, engage in successful treatment programs. And I know we have a Fine Behavioral Health Department too that is helping to lead the way in being able to get those accurate diagnoses. I saw Melanie Roy here. I don't know if you'd like to come on down also as our Behavioral Health Director. And then also, Lou, if you wanted to make some comments too?
Well, that's a lot of whereas, and I just want to thank you for reading them all and giving some attention to these disorders. And I want to say too that Debbie Hertz prepared this for you last night.
Oh, how nice.
She went home and prepared it. She is the coordinator for our WACH, and you deserve it. We appreciate your support.
Girl, thank you so much. I got pictures of my daughter in there too. I just... Thank you very much. Melanie, did you want to make any comments? We have such a vibrant mental health board, a wonderful director, new director coming on board, and just fortunate time, I think, right now with having some funds with Prop 63 that allow us to do more outreach, and certainly with bipolar, and, you know, to be able to get out there and reach out to those people that may, you know, be on the streets and, you know, need assistance. You know, that's what it's all about. Do you want to make any comments? I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I would just like to thank NAMI for their wonderful support, both for persons with mental illness and for your partnership with the department. We really appreciate that. The department can't do it alone, and we need partners and people dedicated like yourselves to help us make a difference in these people's lives. And we also appreciate the board's support. So thank you very much.
I just want to say one thing. Melanie is wonderful. She communicates. She clarifies. I'm on the Mental Health Board, and she has just been wonderful. And so nice to hear. Well, thank you very much. Oh, yes. We need to have a picture opportunity.
I'd like to also thank all the members of NAMI, the Mental Health Board. You've done an outstanding job. You're always an advocate for the population that we serve and the families and the people we need to serve and should be serving. Thank you.
As someone with bipolar who's having a hell of a time, may I say one thing?
The Chair of the Board is... Sure.
When I was with L.A. County Mental Health, I had the same doctor for a decade. Now here with Hillmont, I get a new foreign doctor on an average of every two or three months. It's not working.
Well, I'm not... Yes. Okay. One, two, three. One, two, three. And we're going to do it around here. One, two, three. And one more time. Just remember, one, two, three. Thank you. And we do know that there is more that we always need to do, and certainly being able to get consistency in treatment is one of those things that we need to do. Ombudsman, I think, is something else that's really important that we need to be able to provide so people don't have trouble navigating the system. So we do appreciate the input and the frustration.
Supervisor, thank you for your leadership. You're doing an outstanding job in keeping us in touch with what's going on and what's needed. Thank you.
And I think next we have Supervisor Bennett. You're on for the Arts Week.
Thank you. We have Ventura County Arts Week, and it's Monica Nolan here. Monica, if you'll come on down. I'm gonna read this quickly and then let you make any comments you'd like to make, but it's Ventura County Arts Week, October 5th through 14th, 2007. And whereas the arts have great educational community and economic value as well as the American value of the pursuit of happiness, and children learn critical thinking skills and improve focus when provided with solid foundation in the arts. The arts build cultural bridges, contribute towards cross-cultural understanding, and strengthen the association between the identity and citizenship. And we have more to this resolution. I'd like to turn it over to you, and this is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors this day declaring this Ventura County Arts Week.
Thank you, Supervisor Bennett. Your benefit to the arts. Thank you. The theme of this year's Arts Week is California comes alive with the arts. Ventura County is truly alive with the arts. It's fortunate to have over 175 arts organizations that provide a multitude of artistic art experiences that come alive on a daily basis. And just as an example, I picked up for October 9th, an eight font eight that you basically have to put your glasses on. I decided to pick out for each of the cities here across the district. In Santa Paula, there is an art exhibit in sale going on today. Simi Valley, there is a book lecture and signing at the Ronald Reagan Library and a genealogy discussion. Thousand Oaks has a French art film going on and two art exhibits taking place. Ventura takes the cake. It has five art exhibits going on today and a grand piano soiree this evening. So it truly shows... So it truly shows that the arts are alive and taking place in this county. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the supervisors both individually and collectively because I do know that each of you are a great advocate and supporter of the arts. I'd also like to take this opportunity to invite you to two things, two events that the Arts Council is sponsoring here at the Government Center this week, this Thursday, in fact. One is an arts advocacy forum that's taking place Thursday from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Lower Assembly Hall. We are having a speakers panel to talk about arts advocacy. And actually, one of the items under discussion is going to be legislative... It's actually a legislative piece of legislation that is in the assembly right now, and it's to fund the California Arts Council and its local partners, being the Ventura County Arts Council, to help them bring the arts a little bit more out to the regions. And the way they're going to fund it is through a special sales tax on the sale of art. So it's kind of an interesting piece of legislation. The other thing, of course, on Thursday, and Supervisor Bennett knows that... Benefit, there I go again. You are just such a supporter of the arts. Is the awards reception for our exhibit out here in the hall today. And as you know, it's the National Arts Awards Program that takes place every year, and it's our employees that are out here, and they're very excited about the exhibit that's been up for quite a while. So they're very excited to see who wins, and I hope that you will come at 5:30 to the reception. Thank you.
Thank you.
As I hand this, I want to point out at 5:30, I'm already speaking at Ventura County Museum of Art with their grand opening of the new museum there. So my apologies for being double booked, but I'd like to present this resolution and hope you'll pass it on. Thanks, Monica.
And Monica, just really want to thank you for your advocacy. You do a great job. It's nice to have that face on the arts leading the way. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And I love it every year when it displays out there. It's great. Wonderful base. Wonderful art.
I think we do have one more special presentation if we may go to item 24 next so we can do our resolutions. This is the last one of the day, I believe, and it's recognizing Bi-National Health Week. And Supervisor Long, would you like to do this one?
Yes, I'd be pleased to, and thank you. And Supervisor Flynn had planned to bring this in but was called out of town, so I don't know who's here to receive it. Someone wave a hand or let me know? Oh, there we are, up there. Good. Thank you. If you'd step on down, that would be great, and I'll make comment on the Bi-National Health Week that is to be recognized by the board today, and that is October 13th through the 21st. And it is an annual week-long series of health promotion and health education activities that are geared toward the underserved Latino population, including health education workshops, health care, and health insurance referrals and medical screenings, and facilitates cooperation between groups working on Latino health issues. Bi-National Health Week has expanded from seven California counties and two... Bi-National Health Week has expanded from seven California counties in 2001 to 31 states, to 31 states plus the District of Columbia and three Canadian provinces in 2006, which growth is a result of a partnership between the Institute of Mexicans Abroad, the Secretaries of Health and of Foreign Affairs of Mexico, El Salvador and Guatemala, the Health Initiative of the Americas, the California Endowment, the California Healthcare Foundation, the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, and the State of California Department of Health Services. This week is to outreach to an estimated 300,000 Mexican migrants and immigrants in the U.S. and Canada who receive direct healthcare services. Improving the health of mobile populations requires multiple approaches in service design, delivery, funding priorities, and strong bi-national commitment. So, and the Board recognizing this week is to urge Californians to participate in the various health-related activities planned for October 13th through the 21st, and to congratulate and thank the agencies who really have done the grassroots organizing and promoting of this week, and whose labor have helped to make this such a tremendous success. So I will step down and I apologize again for not having, I know you'll help me in introducing who's with us. Please.
Thank you.
First of all, we'd like to thank the Ventura County Supervisors for proclaiming the Bi-National Health Week. Seventh Bi-National Health Week, October 13th through the 21st. And I do want to tell you that what did start as the California-Mexico Health Initiative, being that there's 25% Mexicans here in the state of California, that's 8.5 million, and documented that is, that's, the University of Berkeley saw the need and the, based on the PTA ideology, and the diseases have no borders, so that's where it started. Seven years later, I do want to tell you that it is, instead of being the California-Mexico Health Initiative, it is now going to be the Initiative of the Health of the Americas. And to show that, I have a poster of all of you here today, and you can see that all the flags and all the countries that have united to participate, including of course the United States, Canada, Central America, and soon to come South America. Based on the long, long activities and many, many, we have so many agencies that collaborate, and I think that that's one of the things that we're so pleased, that the Healthcare Agency, the Ambulatory Care, our clinics, our Public Health Department, Clinicas del Camino de San Johns, among the many, many, many that we have that collaborate, over 60 agencies that collaborate in this effort. And actually our program this year thanks you for giving us this proclamation, and we have 5,000 that will be distributed in all the tri-counties, since the Mexican consulate covers the tri-counties.
My name is Enrique Valle, I am Consul of Communities from the Mexican consulate here in Oaxaca.
Are you new in the position as the consulate? You're our new consulate then? Yes. For the communities, thank you. Okay.
Thank you for this opportunity to be here this morning and for the recognition of the importance of this week, and on behalf of our agency, the Healthcare Agency, as well as our department, Behavioral Health Department, and our directors, that have taken so much care and intention to be a part of our community. You've already heard this morning the depth and the scope of what our needs are in our community for mental health needs, but also public health and healthcare in general. And for us to be able to be here this morning and for you as a Board to be able to recognize the importance of healthcare in our community does make a difference and does enable us at the agency and department level to be able to reach into our community and work alongside our many community partners. And I'm just very proud and privileged that I can be a part of that on behalf of our county. So thank you again for this opportunity.
One more word. One more word, I do want to tell you that as the Health Initiative America continues, of course Bi-National Health Week is one of the accomplishments. We have exchange of medical doctors, we have exchange, not only do we work together and obviously all the health issues that concerns our countries, communal as well. And the other thing we have, we also have that's, of course, the surveillance systems that take place within all the countries. I just wanted to mention that because there's many other things that they do on this effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Looking at our agenda, could I have a show of hands? We have probably a fair amount of people here for item 26, the public hearing on the home funds, is that right? Okay, thank you. And then also the United Way Campaign and Kickoff, we have a good group too. So I think what we'll do is go to item 25 and 26 first. We still, and we still have the second hearing on item 23 as well as, still at 9:00 a.m. Does the Board have any preference on this? Okay. I just, I know Mr. Matheny would like to go on item 17, but I think that might take a little bit longer, so I'd like to address the groups that we have here, if that works for you. Okay. Then let's go to item 25, and this is the 10:00 a.m. time-certain item that we like to brag about a little bit. And this is, I'd ask that you join me in welcoming Ted Myers, our Director of the Human Services Agency, Victoria Jump, you're here, there you are, the Director of our Area Agency on Aging. These two individuals are our co-chairs for the 2006 United Way Campaign Drive, Our Community Matters, and they're going to be presenting a report from our 2006 campaign, and I will leave it to you to say the grand total that was raised. Our 2006 campaign initiated an innovative approach, placing a strong emphasis on reaching as many employees as possible. I see also we have Dave, David Smith here, who's the Executive Officer of the United Way, and I've had the pleasure of being able to serve on the Board now for a few months, which is indeed a pleasure, and it's wonderful to see the effort and the ability of United Way to reach out in a very timely manner, sometimes in emergency situations, and be there for people in need. So at this time, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Ted, and if he'd like to give us the good news.
Okay, well, thank you Madam Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Johnston. This was another successful year for Ventura County for our campaign, our United Way Campaign in 2006. I had a terrific committee. My co-chair was Victoria Jump, and she is this year's Chair along with Todd McNeely, he's going to be the co-chair and inheritor of this mantle. Kathy Long was our wonderful sponsor again after, how many years Kathy, have you done this now? Your dedication and your passing on your mantle to Supervisor Parks, so that's tremendous. We did a great job, we raised $175,137 this year. It is a difficult and changing environment in the nonprofit world. The whole United Way Campaign, Community Impact Campaign has changed, the whole membership organization aspect has changed, and we have, I think, over 2,600 nonprofits in Ventura County, and a lot of donor dollars are going all over the place, but this is a great value for the money. The compassionate and caring individuals that we have in our county, they open up their wallets, the payroll deduction plan has really worked, and I think the money is very, very well spent. And we just had a very committed group trying to change our campaign strategy each year, and Victoria has some ideas for next time too. But at this point, I'd like to introduce our CEO President of United Way, Dave Smith, who's here to tell you a little bit about what United Way is up to this year.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Johnston. 2,600 nonprofits, that number's off just a little bit Ted. The number's over 3,000 now in Ventura County. When I joined United Way six years ago, there were about 1,200 nonprofits registered in the county. Today it's over 3,000. So, the environment continues to change, continues to be more challenging, it makes our work in United Way more challenging, but it also provides more opportunities for us at United Way to reach out to the community, to the broader nonprofit community, through what we call Community Impact, to make a real difference, a lasting difference in the lives of Ventura County residents. We are most appreciative of the support that we receive from the county, from the employees of Ventura County who, time and again, year in, year out, generously step to the plate to support the United Way Campaign. It is one of the most important campaigns for United Way from a couple of reasons. One, from a dollar and cents reason, and two, from a community involvement reason. Having the employees of Ventura County supporting United Way is critical in terms of showing support to the residents, I think, of Ventura County. Most appreciative of Supervisor, Supervisor Long's, she says countless number of years, countless can be interpreted in a couple of ways. It can be a good thing, or it can be not a good thing. But we think it's been a really good thing that she's been so actively involved. We thank Auditor Controller Christine Cohen for her years of service on our Board, and now we're most appreciative that Supervisor Parks has recently come onboard with the United Way. It's a great value and help to us. So thank you for all you do in support of United Way. It's very important to us year in, year out, as I say. So, I want to thank Ted and Victoria for their support during the past year. We welcome Todd joining us as the co-chair this year, and I have with me today, actually she has me here today, is Eve Liebman, who is our Resource Development Campaign Division Director, who has the responsibility for overseeing the activity of the county campaign for 2007, 2008. And I'd like to introduce Eve because I know she has a couple of presentations she'd like to make. Once again, thank you to each of you for your support.
Thank you for your work too, Dave.
Good morning, I'm Eve Liebman, Campaign Division Director. It's a pleasure, Chair of the Board, Mr. Johnston, all the Board members. I want to thank you for this opportunity, I'm a little bit short here, so I've got to bend over. I want to thank all of you for the opportunity of conducting the county campaign for many years now, and it is a great pleasure this morning that I recognize a number of individuals that took place with this campaign and participated. Number one, we have several certificates, one to Ted Myers and also to Victoria Jump for their extraordinary exemplary leadership, and I thank them. Thank you very, very much.
Presents? I like raffles.
We have some, we have some certificates, and Ted, for leading the way last year, we've also given you several gifts, but this is a certificate of appreciation for your hard work, and Victoria as well, I welcome you again this year. And Todd, we've got a hat for you to start your campaign.
Todd gets a hat.
Where did it go? Above and beyond, I want to support a few people here, but first of all, I'd like the opportunity to present the County of Ventura with a lovely plaque, which I hope you showcase in your lobby, and this is for the benefit of the extraordinary donors of the County of Ventura, that raised over $175,000 last year. This beautiful plaque, which I'd like to read to you please, is presented to the County of Ventura, the United Way of Ventura County's honor to award and to recognize the generous and dedicated employees of the County of Ventura, and for knowing what giving back to the community truly is a commitment to caring. And I thank you for supporting us, and this plaque is on the benefit of all your donors. I also at this time would like to acknowledge Kathy Long for supporting our campaign, endorsing our campaign, being a lovely person on the website of the county and the United Way web. This certificate is for you. Christine Cohen has worked tirelessly, effortlessly, financially to process all the pledge forms, and I thank you for your continued support regarding that, so this is to you.
Did you say effortlessly?
No, effort, great effort, and I'm sorry. I've been waiting a long time to get up here this morning.
Because she does so smooth, it seems like it's effortless. Profound.
But she does. Her lovely daughter works in our office as well, Jessica, and she's just delightful to be in our office. And Susan Martin-Bowers for taking care of all the pledge forms, and there are thousands of them, so I'd like you to pass that on Christine to Susan Bowers. And I want you to be able to showcase this, this is for you Kathy, if you can place this in your lobby. And I thank you very much for the continued support, and we're going to have another great year for 2007, 2008. Thank you so very, very much.
Thank you. I just also wanted to add that Mike Powers, the Director of our Healthcare Agency, is also on the Board of United Way, so you really do have a lot of good county people there and wonderful employees that obviously support this very needed campaign. Supervisor Long, just one more.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the recognition, and certainly will continue, and I know that Supervisor Parks will continue in great leadership too, and we always have a great team. I think the co-chair model's working well for us, and I encourage that, and we've got some excitement in front of us, I'm sure, with the next campaign. Something creative, right Todd?
Great. I also have for all the Board members, a little gift for you, if you can pass that on, it's a little pen for all of you. Thank you so much for your support.
If I might also, Joyce Taylor's in the audience, and Joyce's behind the scenes in my offices has really helped to keep my role and support, just the logistics of it flowing well, and I thank Joyce for all of her work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Great, great job. All right, and then we have the home funds, as I understand, will be our next agenda item. This is item number 26, and I believe Ms. Madden will be doing the report.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Johnston, Christine, and Noel, don't want to forget you. We are happy to be here this morning. You may recall in April of this year, our office issued an RFP for about a half a million dollars in available home funds. In response to that RFP, we did receive seven applications, as summarized in your staff report. I did notice at very late hour, a typo on your attachment, the Wave Project, the description, there are five units for the unincorporated area, not the two that's listed on your staff The funding that we're dealing with today is part of the existing budget, that was not mentioned in your Board letter, and I promised the auditor that I would make reference to that in my presentation today. Staff is recommending that all of the available funds go to a new project in the unincorporated area adjacent to the community of Piru. It is for 65 units of farmworker housing, that will be family-style housing adjacent to the community of Piru. The project will dramatically assist the county in reaching our regional housing needs assessment numbers. It will also help the redevelopment agency in meeting its housing goals for the RDA, and it is for the development of new units that have not been funded before. At this time, you need to conduct a public hearing to take testimony on staff's recommendations, and as I indicated, staff is recommending that all of the money go to the Piru project. I will note that CEDC has indicated that they will be requesting a total of $2 million from the county for this project over time. They know that they can't get all that money upfront, but those are requests that will be forthcoming. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, and I will go ahead and open the public hearing on this matter. We do have several comic speaker cards. I'd ask that we try to limit your...
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak this morning. I'm Jill Martinez, representing Peoples Self-Help Housing. Most of you are very familiar with Peoples. You've seen different projects, you've seen what we've done, of course, we've been here in the county for a number of years. We were the lead on the self-help project that Cabrillo did in Moore Park over 20 years ago. Most recently, we built 47 homes in Piru, and now we are seeking to partner with the City of Ventura on a project that we expect to be able to close March of next year. It's 44 units, it has one unit that has two bedrooms in it, and we are focusing on keeping the, preserving the housing there. the, preserving the housing there. However, we also note that there's a huge need in the county, and you've heard a lot of it today, particularly for emancipated youth. And so, we are working with Casa Pacifica, with Casa, different, with behavioral health, county behavioral health, and trying to make sure that there is housing particularly for emancipated youth. We've heard the wrenching stories. We went out to Casa Pacifica and were told particularly of a young woman who was leaving there, 18-years-old, and is, all they could do is let her walk down the driveway and get the bus. So, we want to put aside three units for the county to meet, to help meet this need. And for those of you that know Peoples, you know that we're a stellar organization, been in existence for 35 years. Our supportive services are just unbelievable. I've been able to take a number of businessmen downtown in Ventura and the city staff of Ventura on tours in Santa Barbara. Supervisor Foy, you're the only one I haven't had the opportunity to meet with directly here on the board. But once the City of Ventura saw what we do and what we can provide to the community, they jumped on board with us. The Downtown Ventura Business Organization came to the hearing at the city to make sure that we received the half a million dollars that we requested from the city. The project is a $5.6 million project. We've been allocated $500,000 from the city, but it's absolutely critical that we get as much local funding as possible in order to get the rest of the funds. So, you would be leveraging a $5.6 million project for three units, $150,000, $50,000 a unit, to hold those units in perpetuity. We write initial loan documents for 50 years, and we can write them for another 50 years. So, it's really a bargain. It's absolutely critical that we get the money as soon as possible because we do seek to close in March, and we'll be open for business. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. It's great you're looking at it in perpetuity. I hate it when affordable housing expires and then all of a sudden becomes market rate. Leslie, followed by Jessie Ornellis.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Leslie Levens Crowe, and I'm a member of the Ag Futures Alliance Farmworker Housing Task Force, and my family's been farming in this county for nearly 100 years now. When the Fillmore Ag Farmworker Housing Complex was closed a couple of years ago, we were so distraught because there's so little farmworker housing, particularly in the unincorporated areas. And when Cabrillo stepped forward to purchase the project and return it to farmworker housing, we were delighted. There's just so very, very little available, and I urge you, please, to support Cabrillo, support farmworkers, and support agriculture and granting these funds. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Jessie Ornellis, followed by Dora Crouch.
Madam Chair, Supervisors, Chief Johnston, and staff, good morning. My name's Jessie Ornellis. I'm the Real Estate Development Deputy Director for Cabrillo Economic Development. We're located here in Ventura, 702 County Square Drive. As the board may know, Cabrillo is a California public benefit corporation. Its mission is to develop affordable housing. As such, Cabrillo is a foremost developer of decent, safe, sanitary, and affordable housing in Ventura County. Cabrillo is also Ventura County's housing partner through the HUD Home Partnership Program. Cabrillo has developed housing in all cities in Ventura County with the exception of Thousand Oaks and Port Raini. To date, Cabrillo has developed over 1,000 housing units countywide. In the early part of this decade, the County of Ventura convened a housing task force to determine the housing conditions of farmworkers in our county. The Board of Supervisors adopted the recommendations of the task force as a first step towards the creation of housing for farmworkers. The County Board of Supervisors recognized that agriculture has been a major contributor to the development of California and Ventura County. The board also recognized that agriculture can be often a hazardous, disabling, and difficult occupation for its workers, and that agricultural worker, work is one of the lowest-paid occupations in California. Due to its low wages, individuals employed in agriculture live in some of the most deplorable housing conditions imaginable. Without special consideration, developers are simply unable to secure sufficient equity to provide safe, decent, sanitary, and affordable housing to farmworkers and their families. The following are several key factors that merit your attention as you consider the recommendations of county staff to have the home funds allocated to the PaiRoo project. The proposed PaiRoo Family Farmworker Housing Project is consistent with Ventura County's housing goals to increase housing opportunities for households of all income levels, with special emphasis on lower-income households, and elderly, mentally ill, single-headed household, large families, farmworkers, handicapped, and homeless. The proposed Farmworker Housing Project will provide 66 affordable rental homes to very low and low-income families in Ventura County. Agriculture is a very vital part of the California and Ventura County economy. Housing costs in California are incredibly high and out of reach for the majority of residents, especially farmworkers. Farmworkers are a special needs population because they earn extremely low wages and often work under grueling conditions. Their wages are insufficient to cover basic housing and living expenses. Finally, if agriculture is to remain a vital economic engine in Ventura County, farmworkers will need your help in order to accommodate their housing needs. Your financial contribution to farmworker housing could make the difference between obtaining and not obtaining other funds, such as tax credits, state farmworker housing funds, and conventional financing. So, I'm here to ask you to support staff's recommendations for the home funds and to vote to allocate the funds to the new PaiRoo project. The project will provide much-needed, safe, decent, sanitary, and affordable housing to farmworkers in our county. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ornellis, I have a question for you. What is the projected total cost of the project?
$21 million.
Okay, so this will leverage significantly.
Yes, it is. 10% in total.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Ornellis. Our next speaker, Dora P. Crouch, followed by Chris Velasco.
Good morning. I'm Dora P. Crouch. I live in Santa Paula, California, and I'm here representing the House Farmworkers Group of Santa Paula. We are really happy to have a number of housing units for farmworkers newly produced in San Paula, but we think that we need them in other places in the county also. And so, we agitate for those units to be built, and we urge you to supply the money that this requires. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your regional thinking, too. And Chris Velasco, and then our last speaker is David Schwabahr.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Chris Velasco, and I'm with a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization called Place. It's good to come back and speak to you again about this project. I find myself in a very strange position this morning because if I could, I would be here in support of the staff's recommendation for this, for this project, because I think it's such a great project and Cabrillo is such an asset to the community. But I want to talk to you a little bit about the WAVE project, which I've talked to you about in the past, and there's a lot to feel good about this project in the sense that many of the things that, as I've sat through the meeting this morning, that you have been celebrating and supporting are aspects of this project. Why? Because it's been important to us to embody the county's goals into this project. So, yes, I think it is an arts project, and it gets a lot of celebration about that, providing affordable housing, 69 units in all of affordable housing. And small business creation. Each one of these artists that we create affordable housing for is also a cottage industry. In addition to that, there's commercial space that is also about small business creation. It's mixed-use, mixed-income. We're going to have folks at the very top of the income spectrum, living right next to people who are at the very bottom of the income spectrum, and it all works in a kind of a smart, growth, walkable community where people have access to mass transient jobs that are downtown. There's a car-sharing program that we're launching here where people can sign out a car so that, so that families who have affordable housing also have affordable lifestyles. Cars are not very affordable here, and they can lease a hybrid here for, by the hour, $7 an hour includes everything, fuel, insurance, maintenance, cleaning, all available to the residents in here. A neighborhood watch program being launched with the chief police. It's all prevailing wage, all-union-built affordable housing as well. And, of course, that's all under the umbrella of LEED certification, so it's all green as well. I know these things are all important to you, and the reason I'm back is because we have applied, this will be our fourth application, for the $850,000 that we have said we needed from the beginning. And while last time you did come up with a way against all odds to provide us with a portion of that, we're still short the remaining funds. And in a way, what you might not know is the fact that the agreement, the special agreement that we worked out with all of you, thank you, for creating the units to serve the entitlement areas, ends up knocking us out of the foster youth money that we were seeking from the state, which must have units that are open. So, oftentimes, in these cases, there's a trade-off, one financing source is incompatible with another, and that's the way this happens to be. So, it ends up falling, we end up falling short on the project. And so, I, again, as I mentioned, I don't want to set a precedent here for projects to, in areas that already receive home funds, to get those home funds again. But I think that this is a precedent-setting project in the fact that it's about who, not where. We are going to be creating 15 units of housing for the homeless here, including two for foster youth aging out of the foster care system. These are people that have no address, and in your own report, talking about it as a regional problem, this is a solution, and we're prepared to break ground right around the first of the year. We have site control, we have full funding, except for the funding that I'm asking you for today. So, my impossible request is, is there any way to forward commit funds and still support this valuable Cabrillo project and everything else that you're trying to support? I guess that's why I wanted to come down and talk to you this morning, so thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett, okay, I would just say, you know, what an incredible project. Sorry about the emancipated foster youth portion, but it sounds almost perfect, other than that. So, our next speaker then, and our last speaker on this, is David Schwabahr.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board, Mr. Johnston. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for this opportunity to address you with regards to this issue. I urge you to support the project, as staff has recommended. As Chair of the Moore Park Farmworker Housing Committee, this is an issue that is obviously near to my heart, something that is very important to all of us in agriculture and to all of those who help work in the agricultural fields. Just a point that I think needs to be made is, I think all of us are very fortunate living here in Ventura County, where we have a collaborative spirit and a spirit of coming together and working together on challenging issues. I think this is another point in that, that long litany of things that have been done. Just with regards to that, I was in Washington, DC last week, speaking to Congress with regards to the whole immigration issue, and it's a very challenging issue. It's fraught with many, many different points of view. I think the one point that I want to make is, we are all very fortunate here in Ventura County, where we have folks in our government, as well as folks in various venues of service, all wanting to work together to a common good. So, I thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, you talk about the classic Hobson's choices that we, that we have in front of us here, you know, the great Cabrillo project that staff is recommending, the El Patio project, $150,000, it'll leverage $5 million, and a number of units specifically designed for emancipated youth that we're talking about, the great WAVE project that Chris is referring to with all of the, all of the smart aspects to it. And we only have a certain amount of home funds that are in front of us at this, at this point in time. And I just, so I just want to make a comment that I think staff has, staff did, I think, remarkable work last time when they found a way, in spite of lots of obstacles, they found a way for us to fund some part of the $800,000 request that Chris was asking for with the WAVE project. So, we got something done there, but I think in fairness to our staff, I think there was sort of an implied, you know, we're not going to keep, we're not, we're not going to push you to do that again in terms of that precedent. Doesn't mean it's not a really worthy project, but to try to fund outside of the, outside of the entitlement area is exceedingly difficult and sets some tremendous precedents. And so, we just have to keep banging our heads to some other places, Chris, to try to come up with the money that you need so that you can break ground in January. And Jill, in terms of the El Patio project, we know both these projects in the City of Ventura, and the City of Ventura has their own home funds. These are Ventura County's home funds that are designed for the entitlement area, and it's, again, very difficult to take home funds designed one area and take them someplace else. But I'm very intrigued by that, and I just want to let you know, I'm going to go banging away because the emancipated youth is something we've made a priority. And with that, I think that staff's made a good recommendation, and that's what we ought to support and try to find some other ways to try to accomplish this. But if we can, if we can get, you know, our support, you know, can help make all three of these projects work, that's exactly where we should be going on this 10-year plan to end homelessness. These should be three projects, and I think it'd be really important for us to try to find something. So, anyway, just want to let you know, I'll continue to work with you, try to pull those off, but I'd support staff's recommendation.
Okay, if we have no other questions of staff, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Comments or a motion, was that...
No. Well, I should have a question of staff, if I might, Christie, and not to put you on the spot, you may not have the answer, but as Supervisor Bennett mentioned, Ventura has its own home area and funds, and do we, do you have any idea what funds are still in, available in Ventura, or maybe available is not the right answer, what's unexpended, or...
Well, actually, we went online. There is a source that you can go to on HUD's website, and the City of Ventura has received a little over $1.1 million as home entitlement jurisdiction. According to their records, there's $157,000 approximately that is currently unallocated. However, it also shows that they haven't drawn any money down, so I'm not quite sure what the status of their current projects are. They don't have their performance reports posted online, so we can't see from that point.
Okay. I appreciate that, and that's just, all the jurisdictions struggle with this. There's great need, and all of you are wonderful advocates and very creative in putting together funds and leveraging other dollars, and constantly out there looking for ways to leverage to make the best project possible. And this board is committed to emancipated foster youth and getting the homeless off the streets, and our farmworkers have been a number-one priority for us for a few years. So, it's difficult choices, and I appreciate the Dora Crouch's of the world, who's been so passionate about this for years, and certainly the work of Cabrillo. So, I'm ready to just move the recommended action by the staff to support the funds from our jurisdiction being used in our jurisdiction for the PaiRoo project. There's great support in PaiRoo for this project, and it has history, this site does. And I think by us showing respect for that history and working with the community and Cabrillo to restore and put the farmworker housing back on the ground would just be a tremendous demonstration of our support. So, that's my motion.
We have a motion and a second. Are there comments? Seeing no comments to the motion then, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you for coming this morning. Looking at our agenda and the time, we have a dozen people here for the Regional Water Management Grant, that's items 27, 28. We also have Mr. Britt here on the hearing regarding Villanova Road, and then we also have leftover from our 9:00 AM, Mr. Matheny. So, my inclination is, okay, yes, we have choices here, and at 11 o'clock, we go to the Air Pollution Control Board. So, my thought is that the dozen or so people for the water grant will be taking at least 20 minutes to a half hour, which will definitely put the air pollution board to a later time. Mr. Britt will probably take a minute or two, that's usually how he goes, one minute. So, and Mr. Matheny, while he has waited the longest, I think it might take a little bit longer. Should we try for, maybe we can get Mr. Britt, Mr. Matheny in, but, Mr. Britt, why don't you come on up? And this is our second hearing on item 23, the 9:30 AM time... And this is our second hearing on item 23, the 9:30 AM time certain. And this, again, is something we have already heard. It's our second public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Butch Britt, Public Works Agency. This is a public hearing. We did not receive any phone calls, any written correspondence with regard to this item to restrict commercial traffic on Villanova Road or work it. I don't know if you received any cards on this item.
No, I have not.
But I think the item speaks for itself.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second on item 23. You're right, less than a minute, and that passes unanimously with those that are up here. Supervisor Bennett?
Madam Chair, the water folks who are all here, one, we know this grant well. We know the components of it well. But I'm sure what we don't want to do is give them short shrift and having them rush through what would be a five-minute presentation, because APCD is coming at 11. But maybe we should ask them if they want to do that.
If someone, particularly if someone has to leave, or would you like to caucus among yourselves and decide whether you want to wait until probably 11:30 or so, when the air pollution board is done?
Because that won't be a long meeting, 11:00.
Or try to squeeze it in in five to eight minutes? Then let's go ahead and squeeze in Mr. Matheny.
Oh, no, that might take longer.
In a friendly fashion, item, this is our 9:00 AM time certain, item 17. And Mr. Matheny and Ms. Robinson, you want to give the report? And Mr. Matheny, you have a card on here, no doubt. And sorry, my apologies that we had to pull it and wait.
Okay. Yes. Marty Robinson with the County Execs Office. In May, your board requested the CEO report back to the Board of Supervisors on options for moving the public guardian functions out of the treasure tax collector, public guardian, public administrator combined offices. And today's report that's been submitted to you is in response to that request. As you're aware, but maybe the audience is not, the public guardian and the public administrator provide mandated estate administration and conservation services as specified by the Welfare and Institutions Code and Probate Code. The public guardian responds to referrals from the adult public services and to law enforcement. And once appointed by the Superior Court, they act as a conservator, assuming responsibilities for the care of a person and his or her assets. So when somebody is incapable of caring for themselves and they have nobody else to perform that function, that's when our public guardian takes over. The public administrator responds to court orders to serve in a fiduciary capacity to distribute the assets of an estate for county residents that have died without appointing an estate administrator. Two different functions and two different roles of responsibilities, but both require substantial probate knowledge. The public guardian's office is very service-oriented. Staff reviewed 26 mid-level and large counties to review the placement of these two, these two functions. For the most part, the, about half of them in charter counties are, the public guardian and the public administrators are combined, as they are combined here. They are, when there's a public guardian office by itself, is most frequently combined with a health services type, excuse me, a public services-type organization, like our human services organization. So that's the range of what is occurring. There is also a move afoot amongst, in the state, to remove the public administrator function from an elected position to an appointed position. You see in the report that there are several counties who have moved into that mode of requesting the state to adopt legislation allowing them to make their public administrator an appointed department head, which frankly gives them more flexibility about how they combine these things and where they move them to and where they provide. In terms of, so that's the overall report. It's in your packet. If you have any questions, we'll attempt to answer them. And Mr. Matheny is also here to answer questions.
Should we go to Mr. Matheny? Does that work for you? Mr. Matheny, would you like to go now? And then if we have some questions?
Sure. And so I don't forget to do it. One of the things that I want to do for your board is to let you know, and I believe that most of you have already heard this, Marilyn Scott, who was the Assistant Public Administrator, Public Guardian, and really helped the hands-on in leading us into an era of having things very well documented and with a lot of internal controls in place. She has left the office, and we did a recruitment using the resources of our HR department. And I'm very pleased to be able to introduce to you Lori Montez, who is the new Assistant Public Administrator, Public Guardian. She is in place now, and I'm just very, very pleased to have Lori be part of the team to take it to the next step. One of the items that I want to point out to you, obviously, this is a call that is uniquely within your decision-making and your discretion. But I want to be certain that we have an understanding of at least one of the main reasons why I believe it has been placed where it is. Because certainly, if you look at the surface of things, it does kind of strike one as odd that the person who collects property taxes is the person who takes care of people who have mental illness. And the way in which these things connect, in my view, is that we really don't run a social service program in the PA and PG operations. What we run is property containment, property accountability. When we do our job right, then the individuals who are our clients have their property protected while they are with us and distributed back to them or to their heirs when the time comes. So it's a property management system rather than the provision of social services as our primary focus. Certainly, there are some areas where we cross over, but that's the primary function. And I prefer holding on to it because of that, because I think that while, in reading through the recommendation, I think the Human Services Agency is a well-run organization. I have a tremendous amount of respect for Ted Myers. Their organization focuses, though, on the delivery of social services to individuals. And there is a difference when people are correctly tasked. There's a difference between looking at it through the eyes of a person who wants to provide services to an individual who needs them, and those people go into social work. And the people who we are looking for now in staffing the positions within the public guardian's office are people who have an appreciation for accountability first, and documenting, and protecting assets first. And then coincident to that, yes, we want to have a heart for people, but there's a difference in what the priority points are within our operation. And so that's why I would request that you allow us to now take advantage of all of the reforms that we've put in place. Now we've rebuilt the engine, we've repainted the car, we've got new upholstery on the seats, and I'd like to be able to drive the car for a while. And I'm more than happy to attempt to answer any questions that you might have.
Does the board have any questions? Supervisor Floyd?
If we moved, if, I mean, it sounds like what you've done is put it all, like you said, painted it up, got it ready to go, and it's moving forward. There is, I guess, a cost to us, I don't know, Marty came up with that, is that if we move this, we're going to have to fund Ted's department, I guess, to, huh? If it's Ted or one, it doesn't matter. I'm just saying, since you use that name, one of those departments, somebody else is going to have to come up and build the program within their department. Isn't that what would happen?
Sure.
Yeah. So I guess there's some expense for us to make that change and that move, to do that. And within your department, what happens to those people if they were moved out of your department?
I would, I would expect that the people would move with the function. And so the 12-plus individuals who are working in the PAPG now would be lifted up and moved over to whatever other organization your board would see fit.
All right. So, okay, so the same people probably doing the same function, maybe in a different, under the head of a different department?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm just curious about the efficiency of doing that, making that change. All right, thanks.
The predominant cases are mental health. Is that right?
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett?
Yeah, that, what I think, I mean, you hit the nail right on the head. I mean, you're providing services to people, you're also trying to protect the people's assets. Does that belong with HSA, or does it belong with, you know, somebody who's skilled and has the background in terms of the finances side of it? I don't pretend to have that answer right now. And I appreciate your saying, the people that you recruit, their first priority is the money, and the second priority is the people, and that's not to diminish that. And I think it'd be interesting to sort of understand that a little bit more. Certainly, it makes sense, makes more sense with the estate side of it, where the people are already deceased and you're protecting the estate, so the public administrator part of it. You don't have the human side of it as much. You have the heirs and that that you're dealing with. But with the public guardian, it, I notice how many, there are a number of counties that don't have that with the treasurer, tax collector. They have it all over the map. People have gone lots of different directions. I appreciate the fact that you've put considerable energy into building the reforms and your very legitimate desire to say, we fix the car up, we'd like to drive it for a while. What I would offer as, what I think we ought to do is not make a, not make a change right now, but begin the process of keeping ourselves flexible to make any changes that we want down the road. You may drive this car for a year or two and tell us it's better for somebody else to be doing this. There may be some other reasons why we decided we want to change it. So what I would suggest is, we receive this report, but we direct the CEO's office to begin the process of giving us the flexibility at the state level for a change later, if we choose to make that, so that we have that flexibility out there as we continue to work with you and work on this whole process and try to figure out what makes sense. So I don't know what other board members think of that, but that's where I would go with this today.
Supervisor Lynn?
I would agree with that step. One, I think that there have been steps to improve the operations and the services and the management. And we all agree with that, and we know that there's more work to be done. And I think that this has actually been talked about, I think, for a few years, as to whether this is the right location, and why are these other counties moving in this other direction, and what other options do we have, and how do we look at the efficiencies? How do we evaluate them fairly? But what we have to get to, and always keep in mind, is the needs of the clients who are being served, and put them first. And that analysis has to go to that litmus test every time we look at piece of that analysis. So I would support, if that's a motion, Supervisor Bennett, that we at least put on the legislative platform that we would move to get the enabling legislation, should the board in the future decide to make some changes.
That's a motion.
Okay. In a second. Supervisor Floyd, do you have comments? Personally, my feeling is that the department deals with a lot of people with mental illness. Mental illness is covered by our healthcare agency, Behavioral Health Department. That would be my preference, not Human Services Agency. But I, to me, I also like the idea of having it in two departments because it provides greater checks and balances potentially, if they're coordinated. But it always allows for that red flag, and God knows, we needed that red flag before things got worse, as they did. So I'd like the idea, for that reason, to have two agencies involved. But I also, my preference would be the healthcare agency because it gives them, I think, more ability to help people with mental illness if they have that authority. So I would even go farther than your motion, which would be to direct the changing of that authority to either the Health, Human Services Agency or the Healthcare Agency, even though the Healthcare Agency is my preference, and look at how we can go about changing legislation now, instead of waiting to put it on a platform in case, to allow for the treasurer, tax collector's office to continue that for a while and see how it works. To me, this is a good opportunity to do it now. That's my position.
Madam Chair, I think we need to have the enabling legislation first.
Absolutely.
And, you know, whether it goes on the platform, right now, there's no other way because they'll start the new legislative session. So generally, we have to go.
Well, maybe if it's just a little bit more, a stronger motion saying to move forward. To me, I'm ready to make the decision to change it. It sounds to me this is allowing for it to continue the way it is for at least a couple of years to fill it out. So with that, well, that's how I heard the motion. And unless it gets revised, as I heard it, I couldn't support it.
Well, I don't think this commits us to a couple of years. It commits us to staying with this while we try to get the legislation changed. And the one point I would make is, if we wait for our legislative platform and it doesn't come out till January, and they've already submitted their bills, I would like to make sure that we lobby our legislatures to try to have this be a bill in January when they introduce their new bills, that it's a piece of legislation that gives us the flexibility to go to HCA, HSA.
And then I would definitely, I will definitely support that motion.
And, you know, when that legislation, you know, at any point in time after that, we could have the conversation about what we're going to do.
Thank you. Well, I do, I do support that if we're going to be looking at changing legislation so that we can move it out of that department. Is that what the motion is?
Yeah. The motion is to get the legislation to give us the flexibility to do it. Doesn't necessarily commit us until we have that legislation, gives us the flexibility to be able to do that. And the motion should also say to receive and file the report, because we have to add that also.
Right. And I guess Supervisor, if you're, if you're, what would be a friendly amendment is that we should direct the CEO to look at what are the, what would be the costs involved in moving it into department A, B, C, and report back to us?
Yeah, I think certainly a cost analysis is a good idea, too.
Because we need to have that to understand.
That's right. And also hear from the department heads that we're talking about, so that they can say whether they feel that they're, you know, have the capability of doing it. Okay, with that, then I certainly can support the motion because I think this is a way to make the system better. Are there any, is there any opposition to the motion then? Okay. With that, it passes 4-0. Thank you. We can now go to our Air Pollution Control Board meeting. I apologize for us running a little bit late one of those days.
Yeah, I'm not ready to.
We'll return back from our brief break for the Air Pollution Board meeting and go right to our 10:30 time certain, and this is item 27, approval and acceptance of a $25 million Proposition 50 grant. You're just going to have to twist our arms on this one. Yay! Is it still morning? Because I always say, "Good morning, Chair Parks, Members of the Board, and Mr. Johnston," but he must be out. And we are, I brought a gang with me today. So, we're here today, I have two items, actually, so we'll start with the $25 million grant acceptance, but I want to acknowledge that we have our partners from the state in the audience with us. So, Erin Ragazzi and Danielle Sebel, who are part of our team and work as state staff, so one of them will be speaking on behalf of the state today, so that's kind of exciting. And, you know, before we get into the nitty-gritty, I, there was a speaker earlier who talked about collaboration on projects in Ventura County, and this is one of those that's the most collaborative thing I've worked on, I think, in my entire life. Everybody has been great to work with, there are a couple people, it sort of feels like, you know, the Oscar Awards, if you start naming people, you forget somebody, and then you have to apologize forever and a day afterwards. But I'd like to acknowledge that my co-chair for Watershed Coalition, Dee Zink, from Cuyahoga Municipal Water District, and we could not be doing this without the help of Lynn Rodriguez, who is phenomenal and has water history like no tomorrow. And I want to acknowledge Jim Thonis of Kennedy Council's Office, who spent a lot of hours taking calls from me, saying, "How come I can't do it this way?" So, I really appreciate the help and the help of everyone who's worked on this for the last five years, all of the project proponents, all of the participants in WCVC, whether they got funding or didn't get funding. So, what we're here today for is the first item, and let's see if I get this to work right, oh, please work. He said push that button. Can you just, and I only have three slides, oh, there it goes.
She did it.
Yay! I only have three slides, that's how easy this is. And that slide looks really busy, but I wanted to give you an idea of how the $25 million is spent. So, there's five projects in the Cuyahoga Creek watershed, three projects in the Santa Clara watersheds, and three projects in the Ventura River watershed. And to make it even easier, because that shows you who's getting it and how much it is, this shows you, okay, Roberta, could you advance this slide for me, because I'm just not. Oh, I guess it's just delayed. It's just a little delayed. So, these are the 11 projects for the Prop 50 Integrated Regional Water Management Plan, $25 million grant, this is how they're being spent. So, those little red dots that are shown on the map show you where in the county the projects are. Project V1, it shows it really big, and there's no, well, there's sort of a little red dot right in the middle of the V, that's a watershed protection plan, so it takes up the entire watershed. But that's where the projects are across the county. And one thing I want to mention before I forget, I just found out this morning in talking with Erin and Danielle, that, you know, this has been a long time working on this, and we all started this, you know, five years ago before the bond passed and said, "Hey, this sounds like a great idea, should we try and get some of this proposition money?" And the original group, there were seven, that received notification that they were the original $25 million recipients. And we, the County of Ventura, our group, your board, is the first to accept the $25 million. So, we're very competitive, and we are proud to be the first to accept this money out of Proposition 50, so that's kind of exciting. So, a couple things with the.
Can you just tell us why we're first? I mean, are we first because you guys moved faster, because we got more things lined up?
Absolutely.
Give us a good reason.
We're first for a variety of reasons. You know, I have to say, in working with this group of people, there were often times when you get 60 or 70 people in a room with a lot of different needs and a lot of different agencies, that there were some disagreements, and there were some tense moments. But, you know, there were, there were people who always took the high road, and there was the voice of reason, and the most exciting thing about that is, it wasn't always the same voice that had the voice of reason. So, it was spread amongst the entire group, everybody worked really well together because they knew that you had to get along in order to get any of the money. And this opens the door for Proposition 84, and the pot of money for Ventura and LA County is $215 million. So, we're quickly trying to figure out how we get our portion of that. Well, we were thinking the same, see? We'll take Steve with us next time. That's what we were thinking, we thought that sounded equitable. So, the item before you today is the acceptance of the $25 million grant, and that, one of the other things that's attached to this board letter, is the grant is coming to the County of Ventura, and we're sort of the pass-through for all of the 11 project proponents. There is only one project that's under the jurisdiction of, quote, the Ventura County Board of Supervisors, and that's the El Rio project. Three of the projects are governed by your board, Project V1, Project V2, and Project C7, which is Ventura County Waterworks District Number 1, and the Watershed Protection District has two of them. So, I'll be back to your board, will be back to your board, in a couple of weeks with those sub-agreements. So, one of the recommendations on this board item is not only to accept the grant, but to accept the sub-agreement that's attached to that, so that we can write sub-agreements to all of the 10 project, other 10 project proponents. And the following item will be how we pay for the grant administration, but this first one is accepting the grant application itself. So, you know, there's been so much work, this almost seems too easy at this point that we're like, yay, we're here! So, that's what we're asking for, and I think there's probably speakers on this, too. So, that's pretty much it in a nutshell, if you have any questions.
Well, I have to congratulate you, Dee, the group, I mean, this, it's a wonderful model. It did get us to the table when there's money to be had, but it's just a great model to take elsewhere, and hopefully it will help us in our new grant application, too. But my congratulations, you know, and on behalf of everybody, you know, that's going to benefit, which is hundreds and hundreds of thousands of people, just thank you for your work on this and sticking with it, it took a long time, but had that goal in mind. It's so nice to have success, isn't it?
Absolutely. All right, Peter?
I just, I'm excited, I can see how excited you are. It's just, it's just great, and that you, you all saw the foresight to go and do this early, get in and do it. Just goes back to showing that the hard work you're putting in, even before we talk about this El Rio project that keeps coming up, but all the hard work you're trying to do to raise money for those people, so I just want to say, thanks. Good job.
Supervisor Bennett?
I just think it's real easy for us to take it for granted, that, yeah, well, there's this grant money out there, and we're going to get our $25 million. And I just know it's not that easy, we could talk a long time, but I think there's no question that this team has certainly earned the respect of this board. Thank you.
Absolutely. Oh, we have a few cards here, then. Russ Baggerly, followed by Dee Zink.
You know, I was thinking this morning, before we came back here to address you, this is really nice for me to come down here, I've known so many of you for so many years to see Johnny, and Christine, and Noel, and Roberta, this is like coming down to see old friends, it's really nice, and it's extraordinary. But it's not quite as extraordinary as having spent five years helping to put together this grant application, and working with cities, the county, special districts, major water purveyors throughout the county, and throughout the whole time, nobody got killed. It was really amazing, that truly was extraordinary. And we're still talking to one another and still working together to achieve really great things. Casidus is very involved with two of those projects that you saw up there. One is the San Antonio Creek Spreading Grounds Project, and the other is the rehabilitation of the Senior Canyon Water, Mutual Water District, some of their infrastructure needs to be fixed. This is really some of the first times that Casidus has reached out into the community to do things that it had never done before. And this kind of, this kind of collaboration is something that you really want to see because here in the west side of Ventura County, we do not depend on any other water source but our own. And we're going to learn how to improve that through using these monies appropriately to make sure that we can live within our water budget. So, approve this thing and show us the money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baggerly. Dee Zink, followed by Erin Ragazzi.
Are we in afternoon yet? Good afternoon. Dee Zink with Cuyahoga Municipal Water District. I am also, as Sue said, co-chair of Watershed Coalition, and I come to you today also on behalf of the Cuyahoga Creek Watershed Steering Committee. And I think it would be no surprise to any of you that a significant amount of the credit for this effort goes to Sue Hughes, who has ably led this group. I'm a co-chair, but I'm really diminutive in that sense, that I work alongside Sue, I'm so pleased to be able to do so, and she just deserves a tremendous amount of credit, as does the county. This is no small undertaking, and we have appreciated the opportunity to be housed here, to have our meetings here, to work with your staff generally. It is a large effort. I wanted to show for you also, this is the application, the step two, the second half of the application, that won us the $25 million grant, and there are some people that could not be here today that I would like to recognize for their part in this, because this represented, like many of the deadlines that we focus on, lots of late nights and all-nighters, and Christine McCaffrey from Cuyahoga Municipal Water District, Sachi Itagaki with Kennedy Jinx Consultants, and Meredith, who is here from Kennedy Jinx Consultants today, worked alongside us to try to make sure that we had every T crossed and every I dotted. So, thank you for your leadership, and thank you for the opportunity to continue to work on this. The $25 million that we'll be receiving is not spread evenly among all the projects, and some projects have a large match that they bring, some projects have a very small match because they're very needy. And overall, though, this is a $65 million worth of infrastructure and watershed restoration that these projects represent to our county, and it is the beginning of the implementation of our Integrated Regional Water Management Plan. We look forward to continued implementation as we pursue Proposition 84 funds and potentially a new ballot measure that might extend this program further. And so, we're really just walking down the aisle together, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Zink. And I just think how great it is to be able to have Sue Hughes, but then also to be able to have her to have the time to do that, and that the county values that opportunity, that we give you the time to do that. Erin Ragazzi, followed by Joe Deacon.
Good afternoon, I'm Erin Ragazzi with the State Water Resources Control Board. It's my pleasure to be here today to let you know what a joy it has been to work with Sue Hughes, the County of Ventura staff, and all of the project proponents. They truly have been great about getting together and bringing this grant agreement to you today, and it's been a lot of work. I wanted to also say that we're really looking forward to getting the grant agreement in place and proceeding with this project. This is just the beginning, there's been a lot of work to get here, and this is just the beginning, we're going to move forward and actually get to see the results of all of this good money. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's with the State Water Resource Control Board. And our last speaker, Joe Deacon.
Good afternoon, Board. Joe Deacon, I'm the engineer for Waterworks District A, we supply water to most of the city of Simi Valley, and I'm just coming up to speak in support, Sue embarrassed me into this. And, but it does sound like you're favorable to this, and I'm really happy for that, this does have a grant component for us to develop groundwater in Simi Valley for use to defray some of the imported water that we bring in now. And the more that we can do that, the better for our environment and the better for our citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Deacon. I think that concludes our public comment cards. Do we have any comments or emotions, Supervisor Long?
I'd certainly like to move the recommended action and just applaud all the work, and as was said, this is the, now, now we move ahead with implementing, but the value of the infrastructure, we need to just broadcast that to the public, the value of what we've gained with this grant to the total infrastructure in the watersheds is just incredible. So, excellent work. Move the recommendation.
Thank you. Motion?
And I would second that, and I just want to say that, you know, in the corporate world, you'd be rewarded probably with a commission or something for doing such a great job, but I think it's just because you've done a good job, just the reward of what you did is, I wouldn't say good enough, but it's great, and we want to say thank you.
I'm certainly going to support the motion and point out that with the lowest rainfall that we've had since 1877, water will become the issue in Ventura County in the next few years, and this project, the $65 million, the total infrastructure improvement, will just be the beginning of what we're going to have to do here, so thank you.
Not to mention, we do see now water supply up at the state, too. Certainly support the motion, and did you want to comment, too, Mr. Johnston? Okay, motion second, passes unanimously. Thank you, congratulations. Thank you.
I would like to also add my compliments and recognition to Jeff and Ready for the expertise you folks brought to it, and to Sue. For those of you who weren't here when this started, I used the expression, "A prayer meeting of the nonbelievers," and that was kind of what we had. I was getting phone calls from all over the county, from cities and special districts, saying, "What on earth are you people doing? We've already got a project," or, "You're trying to take the money." And despite all that. And despite all that, Sue, with her enthusiasm and her optimism, kept bringing everybody together until we kind of got it right. Sue, I don't know if you read Winnie the Pooh, but I hope you take this in the right way. I think of you as Tigger, you know? The wonderful things about Tiggers, or Tiggers are wonderful things, their tops are made out of rubber, their bottoms are made out of springs, you know? The boundless enthusiasm that you brought to this, I think, was the secret of getting everybody to finally just start to say, "Okay, maybe this is possible," and by George it was, or by Russ it was. Yeah, right. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And now, we can go on to starting to use some of that. This is the approval of the contract now.
Okay, this is part two of this. This is, okay, now we have this $25 million in the state, and their wisdom elected me as the project director. I don't know how wise that was, but it's obvious that I don't have the expertise to track all of these highly engineered water projects. So, the project proponents, those that are actually receiving the grant funding, we all sat down to figure out the best way to do this. It seems the best way to do this is to have one contract with one consultant that has an engineering background. Each project proponent will be charged based on the years out for their grant, the type of grant they have, the amount of money that they're receiving. So, there'll be sub-grant agreements, and in the sub-grant agreement will be the item that tells them what they, what portion of it will be, they'll be billed for. So, the contract will be with the County of Ventura and Kennedy Jinks, and then we'll be managing that as we go through this next four years of grant. So, that's, if you have any questions.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
Move the recommended action.
Motion is second, seen no objection, that passes. Thank you again.
Thank you.
You know, keep us updated, no doubt.
Absolutely. It's all good. Thank you.
Sue, you're the project director because you're the believer.
Thank you. Well, that concludes our 10-30 Time Certain, and all our Time Certain items are done, and we can now go to our regular agenda. This first item is Item 33, and this is ratification and approval of the assumption of an agreement between Southern California Gas Company and Many Mansions.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Melanie Roy from the Behavioral Health Department. Item 33 is a recommendation for your approval for the Behavioral Health Department to execute the assumption of contract agreement between Southern California Gas Company and Many Mansions. The one item of note is that we're also asking for approval of a waiver of your administrative policy in regards to attorney's fees provisions. That's been reviewed by County Council, and if you have any questions, I'm here to ask them, answer them.
Are there any questions on this one? Not seeing any. Is there a motion? We have a motion and a second. Seen no objection, that passes, and it's another nice collaborative partnership with nonprofit affordable housing, in this case for mental ill. Okay, that passes, and we'll go to Item 34. This is the Healthcare Agency, and this is regarding funding for the National Association of-
City and County.
Go ahead.
Linda Henderson, Director of Public Health, Madam Chair Members of the Board, and Johnny Johnson. This is a ratification due to the tight turnaround of when we were given notice of the money, and I wish it were $25 million, but $5,000 to this project is a lot of money. And this is going to allow us to continue to build our capacity to identify licensed physicians and nurses, possibly retired or possibly still active, who want to get extra training in disaster preparedness in the NIM system, who in the event of a health-related disaster could add to our workforce, which will be greatly needed in the event of a pandemic, flu, or some other kind of disaster. So, $5,000 is a lot to this project, and so, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Move the recommended action.
Motion is second, seen no objection, that passes.
That's great proactive work. Our next item is with the Healthcare Agency, and this is ratification of some agreements.
Good afternoon, Chair Parks, and that's the Board, Mr. Johnston. Two items for you today. The first is request to ratify and approve contract, new contracts, actually, with four of our radiologists that are the core of our radiology service at VCMC. And the second request is to approve a contract with the gastroenterology group, GI group, for services, clinical services at our Magnolia Clinic in Oxnard and Santa Paula Hospital. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions on this one, or a motion?
Let's real quick, in this Oxnard group-
Yes.
-we just increased demand, is why we're doing more?
Well, right now, we have about a backlog of somewhere in the neighborhood of 400 consults that have been sitting, that we haven't been able to get to because of the huge volume of cases we have and our limited GI services. This will expand our services and allow us to break down that backlog, and will also allow us to expand GI services to Santa Paula Hospital, where we currently don't have coverage that we'd like.
Okay.
Do we have a motion on this one?
Move the recommended action.
Motion is second, seen no objection, this passes. This is a little bit off, but I would like to be able to get a report regarding the psychiatric services that are available, that's requiring or ending up with the result of patients ending up having several psychiatrists over a brief span of time.
Sure.
If we can get some information on that, and what we're doing to resolve that.
And I'll talk to Mike Powers, and I'm sure he'll coordinate, he'll have Melanie Roy at Behavioral Health, and I coordinate together and get something together for you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We would like to hear back on that. We'll go on to Item 36 with the Human Services Agency. This is a recommendation of the Workforce Investment Board to appoint Anthony Corones as a business sector representative, and Paul Matkowitz as labor organization representative to the Ventura County Workforce Investment Board.
Move the recommended action.
We have a motion and a second, seen no objection, then that passes. This next item, 37, is also the Human Services Agency, and it's ratification and approval of the submission of a grant application to the California Employment Development Department Workforce Division for the project titled "Work Keys and Manufacturing: Creating a Common Language for Workforce Development."
Move the recommended action.
Second.
Motion is second, seen no objection, that passes. The next item is with the County Executive Office, this is Item 38, and this is approval of an employment agreement with Kim Ulick for the LAPCO Executive Officer.
Move the recommended action.
Second.
We have a motion is second, seen no objection, that also passes. Item 39 is a recommendation of Supervisor Long.
Yes, thank you. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, and I've attached the support documents that are required under our ordinance for a community who wishes to install speed bumps. And I think important to us is that, one, they pay for it, and, two, the fire district doesn't have an objection, and you see that letter, and also the highway patrol, and you see that letter. So, I would ask the Board's support to approve the waivers and to allow the community to pay for and install the speed humps on Caiportada.
Second.
Motion and a second, seen no objection, then that passes also.
Thank you.
We can talk about the difference between speed bumps and speed humps another time. Item 40, this is a recommendation for myself to appoint the following people to the Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council, Martin Kaplan, Lila Jewell, Patty, and Elizabetha Berry. So, I'll move that motion.
Second.
Got a motion is second, seen no objection, then that also passes. And then finally, we have our correspondence agenda. These are Items 41 through 44.
I'd like to move the correspondence, receive and file, and also like to ask the clerk if we could just have something that is a, that's right at the beginning of when we get to Item 41, that says the rest of this is a receive and file agenda, that would be, you know, so we just have a motion to receive and file Items 41 through such and such.
Yeah.
A few times, as I've been going through, I've been reading 43 and going, you know, exactly, correspondence or not.
Maybe just little tags, as correspondence or something.
A break in the packet itself.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you.
Second on the receive and file.
End of that suggestion. Seen no objection, then the correspondence agenda is approved. That then puts us into the end of our meeting, which is a closed session. Mr. Clayvon, do you anticipate an announcement from our closed session?
No announcements.
Okay, great. Then we'll go ahead and adjourn from our closed session, and we're-